Good morning, everyone. I'd call Red Deer County Council to order. The time is 9:30. Our first order business is the agenda. Counselor Holsman?
Good morning, everyone. I would move the agenda as presented for July 22nd.
Thank you. Any discussion? Counselor Moore?
Good morning, Mayor Wood. Good morning, everyone. I move that the agenda be amended today. Given yesterday, July 21st, council received the KPMG audit and council made a public statement acknowledging significant noncompliance with our procurement policies. I move that we postpone the CIO performance evaluation, item 9.1, and we move in camera to discuss the reported noncompliance as it relates to the CIO's responsibilities and performance evaluation. I also note that the evaluation is not due until November 2025. The HR committee was not in compliance with our committee bylaws.
We're not making statements at this time.
And stating a fact, I'm representing the residents of Red Deer County, Mayor Wood. So I'll just repeat that because you interrupted me. I also note that the committee, the HR committee, consisting of Mayor Wood, Counselor Holsman...
We're making statements. This is a time for...
Was not... It's my rationale. That's why.
We have no motion on the floor yet?
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to remove 9.1 because of the reasons stated.
Fair enough. Now we will talk about removing of 9.1. Counselor Mastier?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm not in favor of changing the agenda. We might change up the order of the items, but the agenda items that are listed today, I'm all prepared to deal with them, especially the one that is in question right now. We've met with our HR committee and we've done everything we need to do. So I'm certainly in favor of not adjusting the agenda this morning and staying with as presented. Thank you very much.
Counselor Holsman?
I cannot support that. It is on item 9.1 as stated. And clearly, we had the HR minutes were posted and we worked within our realm. So I will not support that.
Counselor DePauw?
Well, I would definitely like to have more discussion on it. So I'm not sure because I do think we need more discussion on it. And yeah, and I'm not sure.
Counselor Kennett?
I've got a question in that you spoke of. You said November, but that's totally new council at that point. How would a new council evaluate the CIO when they...
Can I respond?
Actually, we're going to go in turn. Okay.
I thought it is our duty to do this. It's one of the things that's laid out in the MGA. So I'm not sure about the rationale of waiting till November to do that.
Counselor Ramsey?
Yeah, I'm not in support of removing it from the agenda. We've discussed this. It's independent from the forensic audit. So I have no problem keeping it on the agenda today.
And no one has spoken so far. We've actually went through extensive work towards this already. The committee's made a decision. The consultant's been hired. The council that chose to us actually did the evaluation. And as far as the November portion of it, it would be totally unfair to... We actually started the process last year at a similar time. We didn't get through it till November because we had extenuating circumstances. And part of those were basically at that time, Mr. Hersberg was away through the month of August and we ended up into a governance review, which also looked at HR issues at the same time. So I totally disagree with the rationale on it. And so we've all had one opportunity to speak. That's what our rules actually state. I don't have to go second round.
I was asked a question, Mayor Wood, point of order.
You were not asked a question.
I was.
Was it a question or was it a...
Well, my question was actually to Legislative Services.
Yes. Hang on here.
Counselor Kennett, could you kindly repeat the question, please?
The rationale presented by Ms. Moore was that we can do it up to November, which that would be a new council. I don't understand that rationale.
Through the CIO, so that MGA states that an annual performance evaluation of the CIO must be completed. The word "annual" is not defined, so we would revert to the dictionary definition, which means once per year. So once per year, an evaluation must occur. There is no requirement for the number of months in between evaluations. So there's no requirement for them to be 12 months apart. It would be 12 months from last November to this November, which is when the last evaluation occurred. But that was really just the 2024 evaluation. What you're conducting now is the 2025. So you're permitted to do it at any point in the year. I believe you had also made a statement about new council conducting that. And based on what we've found out is that really it's a personal preference across the province, that some councils would prefer to complete it themselves so that they knew that there was something from an existing council who had an existing relationship and who worked the majority of the year to conduct the evaluation, while other councils would see that your term is nearing its close. So your ability to complete work is starting to lessen because we're running out of council meeting dates. So it's really differing across the province. Of course, the once per year is a minimum. So there would be nothing precluding a new council from conducting an additional evaluation at that point in time or working through that process as they saw fit. But so no limitations. You're putting really no limitations on the next council from what we can see and what we've learned through the MGA. But most certainly, it is required once per year with no designated time during the year.
Okay. So we've all had an opportunity to speak. One time, as our rules designate, I do not have to go second round. And I'm not going to go second round. I'm going to call a question. Counselor Moore made a motion for an amendment to remove...
I did not speak to my motion. You cut me off. So I made the motion. I would like to speak to my motion.
I'll let you close the motion.
Thank you. So I actually did speak to the municipal affairs and the definition of annual that we got is not correct. And I have the verification of that, that it's every 365 days. So I do realize that November, and I totally agree with my colleague, Counselor Kennett, that November would be too late. But we could have this done way before November. And I want to state, and the mayor apologized last week in public because our HR committee were not in compliance with our own committee bylaws when they started the process. We were not in compliance with the MGA and especially with the timing of the report and the statement that we made yesterday. We owe it to our ratepayers to do this and to do it properly. That's my statement.
We've all had an opportunity to speak. We're not going two rounds, as I said before. All those in favor of Counselor Moore's amendment? Opposed? Counselor Moore was in favor. Everyone else was opposed. Agenda will be... You moved an amendment to the agenda? So now we will go to the agenda? All those in favor of the agenda? Oppose the agenda? Counselor Moore was opposed. The remainder were in favor. The agenda is as presented. Continuing on to the minutes from our July 8th meeting. What's your wish? Counselor Ramsey?
Good morning, Mayor Wood. I would move our minutes from the July 8th council meeting as presented.
Thank you. Any discussion on those minutes? See, no discussion. All those in favor? Let's carry unanimously. Continuing on to reports. First report will be item number 5.1 in our agendas. Oh, hang on. We're going to go straight down to 9:30. Actually, I better watch my own agenda here as we passed it. Close session. Close session for the CIO evaluation. Counselor Mastier?
Yeah, Mayor Wood, I move that it's past 9:30 and our agenda says at 9:30 we're going into a CIO performance evaluation under closed session. So thus, I move us to a closed session at this time.
All those in favor? Let's carry unanimously. We wanted...
Past, we have been remiss because we were late. So I stand by the evaluation that was performed and I concur with Mr. Ramsey. We sent a statement out yesterday saying that we will work with the C O moving forward to correct past mistakes and new processes going forward. Thank you.
Counselor Massier.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just to refresh me, we've got a motion to accept the C O's performance evaluation as discussed.
Yes.
Yeah, fully supportive of the motion. You know, since we're all doing what we're doing today, let me reminisce a little bit too over the last fifteen evaluations I've done, Mr. Hurstburg. It's, I didn't understand private business coming over to public back then. And you were my one employee compared to when I used to have more than that. And I've watched you grow and develop. And this year's evaluation I knew is my last one. So what constructive criticism have I given you? And what support can I give you? And I guess the two things.
Be careful.
Yeah. I'm speaking on my evaluation of the C O ratified the other day that we're accepting. And I've really seen how you get along with your senior staff. And the other big change that's come over the last fifteen years is your ability to work in the region. So fully supportive of the evaluation that we did as counsel, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Thank you, Mayor Wood. So I won't be supporting the motion. I didn't participate in, in the evaluation purely for process, really. Policy and process is the cornerstone of everything that we do as a council. The process was not followed as it was last year, as has been stated by Councilor Palm. We did not even follow our own committee bylaws or the M G A. And to me, it seemed rushed. I, I did get some, as I alluded to earlier, I did get some definite from the actual municipal affairs about what annual means. It's supposed to be in every three hundred and sixty-five years. It's interesting, we've done three evaluations in seventeen months at Red Deer County. So also, this is a bit of a different year for Red Deer County as we are so happy that now the forensic audit is, has been received by council. And there's concerns that were publicly stated in this, in the, in the communication we gave to our public yesterday regarding our non-compliance of procurement practice. All of these duties do, do refer the responsibility of our C O. So I believe this is directly linked to evaluation. So I, I will not support Counselor Ramsey's motion. I believe we need to be transparent. We have a lot of reputation to rebuild and I don't believe this is step forward in that direction.
Okay, I haven't, I haven't spoken. You can actually close if you choose, following my comments. I'm going to say that the committee's job to do, the committee, the committee actually did the exact same as we did. And the committee has a responsibility to actually get these reports done in an autonomy manner. Mr. Hurstburg's anniversary date is August eighth, I believe. Just like any other member of, of this organization, they get their, they get their evaluations done on autonomy matter by the year end. We were remiss not to get it done properly last year. And that doesn't mean we're going to do it wrong this year. Mr. Hurstburg should have had an evaluation done by August last year. He was away on holidays and we waited till he came back and we were in the middle of a governance review, which also talked about a lot of H R issues. And we waited until that was done. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't do it correctly and properly this year. We can pull straws by defining fault with committee. The committee, the committee met with administration. We tried to work our timeframe out with the, with the consultant. We tried a little bit of time that we had left. This is the last meeting. This is the last meeting that we actually have before the anniversary date of, of, of the, of the anniversary of, of Mr. Hurstburg's employment contract. This is the, this is the time. Those members of council that chose to participate with the, with the evaluation did so fully knowing that there's a frenzy got it in place. Was it just council members, administration as well, and his peers? And what I want to say, just following this up, is that, Tom. I think, I think Mr. Hurstburg is probably the best C O in this whole dang province as far as municipality and we're lucky to have him. And I, I just, I'm disappointed in a way that we would size an important duty like this. This is our job to do it, council. Go ahead, Counselor Ramsey. Go ahead. All who's in favor. Opposed. Counselor Moore, Counselor DePalm opposed, everybody who were in favor. Motion's been carried. Okay, going to our agenda, back to item number, first item, item number five point one, bylaw number one zero one three slash two zero two five, municipal borrowing bylaw for the twenty twenty-five paving program. Who's handling this one? Mr. Graves, good morning.
Good morning. So the purpose today, further to council's approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven budget, which includes securing a five million dollar debenture to fund the annual paving program. The next step for council is to authorize borrowing bylaw one zero one three dash twenty twenty-five, allowing Red Deer County to incur five million dollars indebtedness for a five-year term by the issuance of debenture from the province of Alberta. Approval of the twenty twenty-five capital budget for paving is five point six eight million dollars. Within the budget, it was anticipated that the county would borrow five million dollars to fund the paving program with the remaining funds coming from the capital reserve. Red Deer County administration is requesting authorization of the attached borrowing bylaw to finance our annual paving program. Repayment of the indebtedness will be completed over a five-year period in semi-annual installments with interest not exceeding seven percent per annum, or the interest rate fixed from time to time by the province. As per the M G A, section two five seven, for terms of five years or less, municipalities are not required to advertise for short-term borrowing. The financial implications, the borrowing bylaw contemplates borrowing for a five-year term. The current five-year debenture rate, I checked yesterday, it is three point two percent as of yesterday. And so we would get the market rate at the time that we actually issue the debenture. The venture issue date would be October thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, assuming three readings of the bylaw. The debenture date with first reading today and second and third reading on August twenty-sixth would be November twenty-eighth. Administration is recommending three readings today to assist with cash flow and reduce overall overdraft interest paid. The debenture interest rate will be the market rate at the time of issuance. So the alternatives, grant all three readings to the borrowing bylaw as presented. Grant first reading to the borrowing bylaw as presented with second and third reading scheduled for August twenty-sixth. Refer the matter to administration for further information. Deny administration's recommendation. And the recommendation is that the attached bylaw be granted three readings. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions? Counselor Moore, go ahead, I'll go around this way.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Thanks, Jeremy, Mr. Greaves, for the report. I just have a question on the interest rate that the province set. How does that work if we're, do we look at the, the two and decide which one?
Through the C O to mayor and council. So what, when we borrow through the treasury board of the province, we get the market rate at the time of the debt issuance. So it's really dictated by the term and what the market is charging. We did see that the province did lower their administrative fee that they charged for the interest rates. So they're a little better than they were in the past, but they're quite, quite good right now. And so depending on the readings that we get today, it'll dictate. And then it's up to the, the market to decide what the rate will get. We always just put in that seven percent cap on there because we don't know what interest rates will be. And it's just directed by the M G A to make sure that there's a higher rate in there for when you guys pass bylaws.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Massier.
Yeah, thanks. So I don't know, there's not two different pools you're drawn from. It's just, yeah, okay. Because my questions are very similar with regards to the interest rates. Your report says when you looked on the end of June is three point one six. You said when you took a peek yesterday, it's down to two. But it says that you're not going to have an issue date till October thirtieth if we deal with it all today. But I'm thinking, well, that's just, no, that's a few months away. So can you explain a little bit why if we give you three readings today, it still takes you three more months to get a good, a good interest rate date? Because it changes quite rapidly. I can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Through the C O to mayor, mayor and council. So who we borrow through, they are on the public markets for the debts. And so basically, we do the readings. We have a thirty-day petition period that we need to require. And then there's certain intake periods by the province for when our application goes in. So it just takes a while to borrow if we were doing longer than five years and doing the public advertising, it's even longer. So there's quite a bit of time to do borrowing with the province.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Graves.
Counselor Holzman.
That was going to be my question. Thank you, Mr. Graves.
Counselor DePalm.
Thanks for the report. So this is just for this year's paving, right? That's it? Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's all I need to know. Thanks.
Yeah, through the C O and council, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kenna.
Yeah, I just have a, a question there. The report says interest not exceeding six percent and then brackets seven percent per annum. Can you explain that?
To the C O to mayor and council, yeah, it's seven percent. It was written as six, that was a typo. But like I said, when we do this bylaw, we don't know what the market rates will be. So the treasury board has asked us to put in a, a high rate to just in case if markets change and suddenly interest rates went up. That's not what we're predicting. And like I said, that today's rate, if we were to borrow, it's three point two percent. Obviously, over the next two or three months, there could be changes by the Bank of Canada, which might dictate the change in the interest rate. We just put that cap high number in there to make sure that by the time the borrowing and all the advertising goes through, that won't be below that number. When we, when it's time to borrow, when the issuance of the debenture comes out.
Okay. And you, you talked about the provincial removing their administration fee. How much was that, do you recall?
To the C O to mayor and council, I, I don't know how many points it was. If memory serves, it was maybe point four of a percent or point five of a percent. I, I could be corrected on that, but it was, it was a little bit. They were taking a little bit of an administrative fee, though.
Okay. And they're not taking that now? Thank you.
Counselor Ramsey.
My question was answered, Mayor Wood.
Thank you. Looking for a motion. Counselor Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. I'd, I'd move first reading of the, the bylaw. This, this is as we discussed at, at budget time and has been the case for the, the last couple of years as we try and get caught up here, so.
First reading's been moved, discussion. Counselor Massier.
These are the easy ones. Yeah, these are the easy ones. You're getting pavement. And I don't know how long the term is, a five-year term, and our payments lasting 20 years. This is great investment of Red Deer County dollars. You're getting great value and interest rates are relatively low right now. So great worker on, on getting good capital items for Red Deer County at a good interest rate and something that we can handle with our cash flows. So fully supportive of the bylaw in front of us.
Counselor Moore? Counselor Kenna? Counselor DePalm? Counselor Holzman? Yeah, I, I agree with you. Uh, we've already made a lot of decisions already. We've already set the mill rate. We've already, we've already set the budget. We've already tendered and we're, this is an anticipated day. So, um, do you wanna close? All those in favor, first reading? It's carried unanimously, looking for second reading. Counselor Holzman?
I would move second reading of the bylaw.
Any discussion on second reading? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried unanimously, I need third reading at this time. Counselor Master?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll give you a third reading at this time. These are decisions we've made and talked about which roads we're gonna get paved and some of them are being paved as we speak. And you know, and we are using some of our own money to do this project. So third reading at this time is staff recommendations are.
All those in favor, third reading this time? That's unanimous, I need third reading. Counselor DePalm?
I would give third reading at this time.
Third reading, it's been moved by Counselor DePalm. Correct? Okay. Any discussion on third reading? All those in favor? Carried unanimously, thank you very much. Mr. Graves, thank you. And your team. Continuing on to next item, on item number five point two, bylaw number one zero one two slash two zero two five dash A, bylaw to amend the fee bylaw for the fire response fees. Would that be you, Mr. Brand? Good morning.
That would be, good morning, mayor and council. So this is to consider granting three readings to bylaw one zero one two, 2025 A, to amend the fee bylaw to align our county fire response fees with rates set by Alberta Transportation. So for consistency, we annually align our hourly response fees with those set by Alberta Transportation. Uh, they, as you know, the province operates on a different fiscal year than municipalities do. So they set their rates and send notice of their rates that come out and that should say their 2025 rates, not their 2024 rates. Uh, that came into effect on April 1st. So while we set our fee bylaw typically in November, we're always, there's always a bit of a lag, hence why looking at this. Uh, our two contract response departments in Sylvan Lake and Innisfail use those same rates. And so they use those rates as soon as they come into effect. And when they are responding to incidents on county roads, they, they bill us first and then the county bills through, bills through back. So if we have a disparity, uh, discrepancy between the rates, then we can only bill, we can only bill out at what the current rates are where they're billing us at the new higher rate that's been set. So, uh, this is that opportunity. Anybody that's responding on Alberta Transportation provincial highways can, can bill directly to Alberta Transportation, so. So really this is just to update the by, fee bylaw to match those rates. And as I mentioned, there's just that lag that's there. Uh, so you see the rates here, so they're updated by the province to $740 per hour, um, going forward. And then we have an administration fee that applies to all invoices, which just covers the administrative time in putting those together as well. And that's standard in the fee bylaw, so just updating those numbers. Standard communication plan with respect to this. Bing, thank you. Uh, and the alternatives for council to consider are to grant all three readings of the bylaw as proposed, uh, to defer decision and direct administration for some further information or to deny the bylaw amendment, which would just maintain the current fee bylaw in its current state. And our recommendation is that council grants first, second, and third reading today to bylaw number one zero one two, 2025 A, a bylaw to amend the fee bylaw as presented.
Thank you. Questions, Counselor DePalm?
Thanks for the report. So I just have one question. Does the province, uh, do theirs every year? Does everybody, I guess, be in sync every year?
Yeah, through the CAO, through the CAO to mayor and council, yes, they, they issue their update every year. So this, this would be a thing we would, we would continually expect. So while we'll do the county's update to the fee bylaw. So actually, we've, we've talked about administratively, just making sure this is a standard thing that's kind of on the agenda.
Okay.
We don't, um, we get the letter a little bit delayed and then it takes obviously time to prepare the report, but we could just put it into the regular rhythm. So council would see the, the normal fee bylaw in November and then you would also see this update, uh, sometime in May or June, based on the changes that they make. Sometimes they do issue, uh, do issue rates and the rates don't change, in which case then we wouldn't have to change the fee bylaw.
Okay. So they send it out about May, June usually, but it takes time for us to get it.
Correct, yeah, it comes, it comes into effect on there, on April 1st and then it takes us a little bit of time and, and then just whatever the rhythm is for what we have going on as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Go around. Counselor Kenna?
Uh, just a question. When there's been issues or instances where we've sent, uh, people for fires up north and whatnot, are we on the Alberta rates for that as well or is it our, our bylaw rate as a word?
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, through the CAO to mayor and council, that's a great question. So this only applies to responses that we do in the county. So outside deployments can either be negotiated directly between us and the requesting jurisdiction or there are other provincial guidelines that apply, uh, which are updated annually, but they aren't set in our fee bylaw. So then we have that opportunity to, to follow those rates, uh, going forward. So if they change, we're, we're a little more flexible because they're not included in the fee bylaw. This is essentially what happens inside the, the bounds of, of the county.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Any questions? Counselor Moore, any questions?
Just administratively, I agree. I mean, if it's something that, you know, we just need to align.
Questions?
So you think that's doable, Director Brand?
Yeah, through the CAO to mayor and council. Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's just the nature of there will always be a lag. So council will, will see a fee bylaw and then see an amendment to the fee bylaw within, typically within six months. That'll just be standard practice going forward.
Thank you.
Counselor Master?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So you, we're changing Red Deer County's fee bylaw. My question is, do we have another charge for our fire trucks under our fee bylaws? Or if our fire truck goes to work, this is what you have to charge it at? Or do we have an option on what you charge our fire truck out at? You said this was for cleaning up accidents or something or for our neighbor jurisdictions to be in line. But I'm thinking about when you go to that, I don't know what fire trucks go to, but.
Mr. Brown?
Through the CAO to mayor and council, you, Counselor Master would be correct in that because we are setting these fees in our fee bylaw, these then become the fees that we charge for any response where we charge. Where the discretion comes in for us is the department billing is what we bill for and how many trucks we may bill for. So, uh, motor vehicle collisions on highways, there is a standard response protocol that's accepted by the province. There's a standard number of trucks. Some incidents require more than that minimum and, and would be billed. If you looked at a different type of response in the county, such as a structure fire, uh, there's, we generally don't bill for those unless there's negligence or some other, some other action. But if we were to bill for those, we would, we would bill, uh, the number of trucks that would have been required for that, not the number of trucks that go. Uh, sometimes I, I can safely say sometimes just the nature of being a paid-on call department, a truck will roll with the members that are there and available and then subsequent members will show up and bring another truck. And that's essentially just a crew transport vehicle and, and we treat it as though they were on the first truck, uh, so as not to, to bill more. So that's kind of where the discretion comes in and how we, and how we bill for other types of responses.
Counselor Holzman? Okay, um, everyone's had a question, opportunity? I want, I made it all the way around? Okay. Looking for, need a motion though? Counselor Holzman?
I would move that we grant first reading, uh, to bylaw number one zero one two slash 2025 A, a bylaw to amend the fee bylaw as presented.
Discussion on first reading, Counselor Moore?
Makes sense to me.
Counselor Master?
Yeah, it, um, I guess it was in my question, but now we're at the debate stage. So I think it's great that that department has a little bit of flexibility to deal with its rigid fee schedule. So that's what I got from my question and answer and, um, I'm happy for that. So fully supportive, staff recommendations today.
Counselor DePalm? Kenna? All those in favor? Carried unanimously, looking for second reading. Counselor Moore?
I would move second reading as presented.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's carried unanimously, I'm looking for third reading at this time. Counselor Kenna?
Yeah, I'd move third reading at this time.
So Kenna's moved third reading at this time. All those in favor? It's carried unanimously, we'll now need third reading. Counselor DePalm?
I would move third reading.
Third reading has been moved. Any discussion? All those in favor? Carried unanimously, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Brown. And your team. Continuing on to corporate services contract award financial software. Mr. Graves, good to see you again this morning.
Good to see you again. So gonna talk about the ERP financial software contract award recommendation. So the purpose is to seek council's approval to award a contract for a new ERP financial software solution to replace our existing central square diamond system. The CRP cap 0007 financial software upgrade project charter was approved by council November 26th, 2024 alongside the 2025 to 2029 operating and capital plan. The project addresses the need to replace an outdated diamond financial system. Council approved, uh, $1 million to fund, fund the project in 2025 and $750,000 in 2026 to support the new ERP financial software solution in the capital budget. The ERP financial software upgrade tender was publicly posted on Alberta Purchasing Connection and Bids and Tenders on February 14th. It closed on March 28th at 2:00 PM local time. Submissions were evaluated based on a weighted criteria outlined in the council report. We received 10 compliant bids. The evaluation committee comprised of three internal staff and one representative from our external project management consultants. Each submission was independently scored and based on the weighted criteria. These scores were then aggregated to determine the final rankings. Four vendors were shortlisted following initial evaluation and admitted to provide an in-depth demo of the product. Each vendor submitted a best and final offer that were evaluated using the same criteria. Bids ranged from $872,452 to $2,964 excluding GST. Nova Modus, which is selling Oracle Fusion software, was the highest scored vendor, cost of $2,540, $540 and $600, including implementation and five years of licensing and maintenance. That number, uh, has two components. There's the implementation cost, which is capital funded, and then the licensing and maintenance costs operated funded. Although the original scope, uh, did not include a human resource management module, it was added after the demos revealed that is a standard feature in modern ERP systems, offering key benefits given our lack of dedicated HR software. A supply chain management and procurement module is also included to improve financial visibility, streamline purchasing workflows and enable greater oversight of procurement activities. Additionally, a customized citizen's self-serve portal will allow residents to manage services like utilities and tax payments with room for future expansion, such as a rotation, registration and permits. While these additions increase the overall cost, greatly enhance the functionality, transparency and long-term value of the software. The recommended higher-priced solution offers a significant greater benefit than the low-cost alternatives that is best positioned to meet Red Deer County's evolving needs. We view this as a long-term strategic investment. With its modern scalability and extensive functionality, this platform will help Red Deer County streamline operations, improve service delivery, enhance public trust in our financial management for many years. Financial implications? Given the competitive tender process, administration is confident that the selected vendor's pricing reflects industry standard rates for a project of this scope. The cost was deemed fair and reasonable considering the solution's functionality, scalability and long-term value. To supplement, the $1 million budget approved, uh, in 2025, funds from the tech moderni- tech modernization project would be reclassified from operating to capital in 2025, aligning with its objectives. The current budget is sufficient in 2025, with any further funding to be addressed in the 2026 budget. Entending the ERP will also retire legacy systems, generate cost savings that will offset ongoing licensing and maintenance fees. So in the table below, um, we have the capital implementation cost for the software. We have project consulting service fees, staff resources, contingency. So the total capital spend on the software would be $2,429,542. So down below is just showing the budget implications. So we had 1.75 million approved over the two years. Uh, the tech mod, uh, funding from operating being reallocated, so $2 million of capital budget approved. So there's a capital shortfall of $429,542, which we would include in the 2026 budget. And then there's just an annual, uh, maintenance and licensing fee. So in 2027, when the product's live, there'd be an incremental increased cost of about 1.1 million dollars. So we would have savings from our current systems. We would quit paying for the licensing and support for those. And then the new system would cost a bit more for the licensing support. So we'd see a hundred thousand dollars each year of operating increase. So the alternatives, um, approve administration's recommendation to award the contract for a new ERP financial software solution to Nova Modus in the amount of $2,540, $40,600, not including GST. Change the project scope and re-tender the project. Deny administration's recommendation towards a tender and cancel the project. Administration recommends that council approve the contract award for the ERP financial software solution upgrade to Nova Modus in the amount of $2,540,600, not including GST. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Uh, Counselor Holzman? Questions at this time?
Thank you for the report, Mr. Graves. I, I just would like your comments regarding the actual software. Um, I see in here you have that externally our auditors, it would make it a whole lot easier that we have to get all the financial data together with the AI equipment. And just the storage and generalities of it should improve greatly this last audit that we just went through, both externally and for.
I'm gonna get a phrase into a question.
That's what I'm asking. Can you, can you comment on that, please?
Through the CAO to mayor and council, these new systems, the way that they, um, hold data and collect, it's a lot easier for the auditor systems to take that data and do what they do with their AI. So looking for trends or anomalies. So our older legacy system, the data tables are complex and not easy to download out. So in the new system, we can export the data out. They can run it through their systems and then they'll have a better sense of what they wanna sample and potentially audit when they do their annual audit.
So then they would just have to put in the threshold that us as council set when we want the audit set and they would just come up with anything anomaly above that, right?
Through the CAO to mayor and council, definitely our, our materiality threshold comes in to, uh, becomes a factor. But there's other things when they're auditing that they're looking for, different trends. What was past spending versus this year's spending? Uh, sometimes they'll just look at really big things or really small things or repeating numbers. There's a lot of different things that they look for when they're doing the audit.
Thank you.
Any questions, Counselor DePalm? Counselor Kenna?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, in your report, you talked that, uh, you're taking the tech modernization project funding and moving it to this as well. Am I to understand correctly that, uh, what that was gonna be, this software is actually incorporating that into itself?
Mr. Graves?
Through the CAO to mayor and council, that's correct. You know, the tech modernization was a big initiative. It was a, a three-year project to modernize the county software. One of the work packages, the biggest work package was the financial software implementation. There's been some other projects that have come out of that. We've done some policy development. Uh, we've also looked. We've also looked at some cybersecurity assessments and then some cybersecurity playbooks. So like if we were ever attacked, what we would, what we would do. But yeah, we wanted to use the funding that was approved for this project because it aligned well with the modernization of the county's software.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ramsey?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. So just, just looking at the, the tender process in the report, I'm, so was, was the initial tender quite broad? Like I get this is probably a hard thing to kind of go out and, you know, be super specific about what you want. But I, so I'm just curious with, with the process, was the initial tender quite broad and then refined as, as things went along?
Mr. Graves?
Through the C O, the mayor and council, it's a, we, we went through and we documented. We had some internal discussions with staff about need-to-haves, desirables. So we made quite an extensive list, like hundreds of requirements. And so it's quite big. And so we're putting that out in an RFP. We, we've talked with peers before we went out and, and got advice about how they had done their RFP process as well. And so the software solutions all come from a little bit different of angles. So, you know, we have a lot of requirements. Some of them can address a lot of them. Some of them can customize solutions. So we're looking for the best overall product. And so that's why we first took them in, then we shortlisted and we went into detailed demos to make sure they said that they could deliver the requirement. We're looking at those demos to make sure that they can deliver those requirements that we need. And then picking the best fit for, for what we need to go forward.
Okay. And then, you know, just for clarity from your report, you, you mentioned, you know, the hundred thousand increase in operating. That, that doesn't compound annual, that would just be the, the new, like, that, that's a single amount. It doesn't increase year over year.
Through the C O, the mayor and council, that's correct. It's just the incremental, like, increase. We currently pay already these software and licensing fees. We would retire the legacy systems, but we'd still have to pay a hundred thousand more per year, not accumulating.
Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Just a couple of questions. It seems that there was a shift from just looking for finance and then you found something that could do way more. So is that relevant in the, in the range of the bids from, what was it, eight seventy two to two point four million roughly?
Through the C O, the mayor and council, yeah, so when we put out what we were looking for, we had core requirements and we had desirables. And all the new modern systems do have a lot more. There's HR management and payroll. They're kind of go together. And all the new systems do have this HR management. So that's a lot. It does things related to health and safety, performance evaluations and whatnot. So they all included that. And when we were reviewing all the demos, we saw that that could really fill, fill a gap. For software, we do a lot of those processes manually right now. And so all of them had it. They all were demoing with both the HR and the payroll in them.
Thank you. And you sort of led into my next question, Mr. Graves, is what's gonna happen to the software that we use to do that other stuff? Like, are we invested in that? Or is there gonna be a cost to, you know, leave that and, and invest in this newer, broader software?
Through the C O, the mayor and council, we expect this project to take between twelve and eighteen months to complete. And as we cut over, is the term they use, but as we flip to the new software, we would make sure first running in parallel that both softwares are working and giving the same numbers. But then we would cut over to the new system and start using that, and then we would retire the legacy system. And so it's, we have quite a portfolio of softwares and we're trying to have one that'll be our core software. And so we can retire some of these other softwares and get to current software that'll address our needs the best.
Yeah. And what do we pay currently for legacy? What's the operating cost per annum?
Through the C O, the mayor and council, I don't have that number off the top of my head, sorry.
No worries. Thank you very much.
Counselor Master?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm just looking at the numbers, two million dollars. Wow, just for a computer, man, the pencils I could buy you. Mr. Hersberg, the staff you'd have to hire to run those pencils. No, I'm looking at how you're trying to finance your capital purchase. And it, it looks like in our big three and five-year budgets, we didn't have enough for you. I'm surprised you only went out a couple of years and maybe we don't have much more capital money in the next couple of years. But once again, in your report, you said this new stuff's gonna last for, you didn't say a date. You said a, a long time. And I'm wondering. Yeah, if it's a long time, then two million dollars in your little over budget's not a big thing. But if we go to this new software, is it like that stuff in my home? Now that old TX ten, I don't know if I can go far enough back in my computer hardware. That you're gonna want capital for new hardware now to run this new fancy software? Or do you feel in our three to five-year capital budgets, you're not gonna come back and ask it for more capital money? And I get your operating's gonna go up a little bit, but do, do you feel comfortable that in our three and five-year plans that the capital is not gonna be requested and so going over a little bit in twenty five, make it up in twenty six will be a doable thing? And of course, I'm asking the financial guy through Mr. Hersberg, so I'm hoping to get an answer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Through the C O, C O, the mayor and council, so the software, one of the considerations we had was what the roadmap for the softwares look like and we want to get many years out of it. So we're talking about ten years. Council could probably appreciate that technology does move and change. But this is a software that we feel like has a lot of runway to continue to morph and be useful for the county for, we're hoping ten to fifteen years. Our current system we've had for fourteen years. And so the scope of this project, I don't see us coming back to, to council. I mean, that being said, any project, there's things that come up. And if you want a scope change, and we, we would certainly come back to council if there was a scope change. But I'm, I'm confident that we, we have the budget for the next three years here to accomplish this and get us all into a modern software.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess, I guess the only question, I think everyone's had a chance with me, right? The only question I would have is, you know, our financial auditors have indicated that we have an old system that it needed to be replaced. And this would not satisfy the needs of, of those requirements that they've identified?
Through the C O, the mayor and council, yes, it would satisfy their requirements.
And the other, and the other answer, I, I see that you have a procurement module in this. And I know just coming through a procurement audit and understanding that I've, I've seen a lot of papers around here for a long time, months and months and months of them. Well, should there be another audit ever? And hopefully we never would need one. But for this particular software, how do you, how do you see it being able to help such a situation?
Through the C O, the mayor and council, so the, this software, the purchasing module is quite robust. So it has the purchasing plus the supply chain. So we could, we could really make it as complicated as we wanted to. But what it will do very well is it'll track and document dates, times, who did approvals. It'll all be electronic. There'll be flows, workflows that go through to help staff with the right approval levels. It'll all be documented. So it really would take what sometimes we've done in the past as manually sort of saving and making sure we have all the right records. It'll, it'll be a record management system that will document and log who approved what at what time. Here's a change order that happened. Here it is. We can tie purchases to contract numbers. So I think there's a lot of options in there to really help us be able to do better reporting and have a streamlined process for purchasing.
Thank you very much. Okay, we've all had a chance to ask question. I'm looking for a motion. Counselor Kennett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'd move we approve administration's recommendation toward the contract for the new ERP finance software solution to Nova Modus. The amount of two point five four, six hundred thousand, or six hundred, not including GST. I think this is a step forward, something that was identified in the report we received yesterday to address some of the deficiencies that need to be addressed around here. So I think this is a move in the right direction. Thank you.
Counselor Ramsey?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Yeah, I'm, I will admit, I am struggling with this one a little bit. You know, I, I agree. It is, it is something much needed. We've heard that from, from our staff and, and the external auditors we use. You know, I, I think some of the, the components to it and what's being recommended are great, especially, you know, I really like the citizen portal. I think that's something that would really benefit folks with watching their assessment and, and all that kind of stuff. And, and that's something we've kind of been asking for as well. So, you know, I do, I, I, I do like the proposal and I think this is a, a, a good step forward. I, I am struggling a bit with, with the amount of the tender and, and that it, you know, is a little bit over what we estimated originally. And so, so I am a, I am a little concerned with that part of it. And, and I don't know if this is a situation, you know, without being involved in the tender process, given the, the scope of it. If this is something that if we, we went back to the market, if, if we might be able to get a little bit more competitive with it.
Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Yes, I, I, I will support this. It is a lot of money. But I do think because it has been consistently flagged, the vulnerabilities of our system. I think it behoves us to do this as quickly as possible. The one thing that I, I can justify, I think the difference is four hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars. Is that it's gonna be multipurpose. And I think, I see this as sort of taking over all the technology. It's got so many different facets and, you know, it will lead to transparent record keeping that's accessible. So it is a lot of money, but I, I, I have confidence that this is a much-needed change. And it's an investment in our reporting to our ratepayers on so many things. Thank you.
Counselor Master?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. That scared me too, man. Wow, these are big numbers. I mean, it's two percent of all our money going to our computers. It just makes you wonder where our money goes. But then I look at what it could do for us and I look at how people handle their affairs. And I don't think I want to hold back technology. Mr. Ramsey, you made a great point. I can go online now and I can check my own assessments, my tax history, and I can do a lot of that stuff. Maybe my generation needs to phone someone and ask that question. But the next generation seems to be able to look that information up themselves and they want it right now. And our system's gonna be able to accommodate. It's four hundred thousand more than we budgeted for. Should we re-tender for that amount? I'm hearing he doesn't need much more capital in the next near future. And now he's starting to throw ten years around and the old stuff he made lasts for fourteen. So that, to me, is not a lot of money. Mr. Mayor, do we not need a budget adjustment? I guess not. He's working inside his budget for the next year or two. But he is forecasting for those that'll sit here in the year twenty twenty six, he might need a little budget adjustment for that one. I'm gonna fully support the motion. I think the ducks are in a row on this one.
Counselor Holsman?
Thank you. I, I will support the motion. I have to comment that it is expensive. But we just came through a very lengthy process with the forensic audit that cost us a lot of money. And if we take a look at that with the staff time that was spent, the cost of the audit, we had a governance review. This helps get to the next step. And that was my original question. If this helps our regular auditors and as well helps prevent again another forensic audit ever happening, this is the right direction to go into. And I also have to say it helps our staff. Helps them to keep records in an easier format. And it has HR modules. It has all kinds of stuff in there. And I, I agree, if a ratepayer can go on, take a look at your assessment. I know that's what a lot of people want to see and where your taxes are. I think that's important. So I totally support it. We've spent quite a bit in the past trying to get to this day, so I will support going forward. Thank you.
Counselor De Palom?
Yeah, I'm definitely supportive of the motion. I think, you know, it has been mentioned over time that we needed to upgrade, upgrade the system to more current. So I think this is a good thing. And honestly, I don't feel that that's like way over, over the timeframe that it can be used. So I will definitely support the motion.
Okay, I haven't spoke. You can close when I'm finished. Counselor Kennett? You know what? We have an outdated system, fourteen years old. Administration went through a hundred items that they felt that were necessary in order to, in fact, be able to do the work that they need to do. You know, I take a look at a lot what we do here and it's, it's about, it's about being with the times and, and growing and being efficient. And I think it's extremely important that we start out with, with the appropriate software. I would, I look at some of the modules that have been added and I think they're good. The one, the one about procurement, I, I think that, that's excellent. You know, that was over and above, probably not even thought about the way I looked at the original tender. You know, the HR module and, and some of these other things. Both of those things were identified in the, you know, most recently. So I think that we, that we need to give our, our staff the appropriate tools and set them up for the next fourteen years. You know, I'm surprised this last one lasted that long. You know, our, our auditors have been talking about it for a while. And I just appreciate the hard work that, that administration went into trying to determining what's gonna suit them. And you know what? They've come back to us with that and a tender that I, that I feel is appropriate. I'm definitely gonna support it. Counselor Kennett, you would like to close? All those in favor? Opposed. Counselor Ramsey's been opposed. The rest were in favor. The motion has been carried. Of request for a recess. We'll come back in ten minutes at eleven oh five. Of request for a recess. We'll come back in ten minutes at eleven oh five. Eleven oh five. Uh, the next item on our agenda is item number five point four. Also, we got a, a bridge tender. Just come forward. So I'm not sure, is it Mr. Keller or Mr. Spears, or who's going to handle this?
Mr. Spence here.
Okay, sorry.
That's all good. We'll just wait for the, uh, presentation to be pulled up here. Didn't get one. Uh, okay. Well, all right. Well, I guess, uh, I'll begin here. We'll begin without it here, sorry. Oh. Nothing there. Okay. Apologize on that. Um, good morning, Mayor and Council. We are here to bring forward the recommendation for Bridge File seven zero nine four, uh, bridge construction. Bridge File seven zero nine four is a major bridge comprised of four spans over Little Red Deer River located on Township Road three fifty-two, um, better known as the Cottonwood Road. Uh, it's located one kilometer west of Range Road twenty-three. The bridge is currently load restricted and many of its elements are in advanced stages of deterioration. Uh, the purpose for today is, uh, and this report is to seek council's consideration toward the contract for Bridge File seven zero nine four, structure replacement for construction in twenty twenty-six. As discussed earlier, Bridge File seven zero nine four is currently load restricted, um, with timber members being fifty-one years old and critical trust members being nearly a hundred and twelve years old. With advanced stages of deterioration, the structural condition rating of the bridge is poor. And the replacement of this structure has been identified in the twenty twenty-five Bridge Capital Program. However, due to the timing of STIP funding announcement and industry concerns of major bridge construction in the expedited timelines, the schedule for construction has been shifted to twenty twenty-six. The preliminary engineering report and structural alternatives report was completed in twenty twenty-four uh, to determine the type of structure to replace the existing bridge. And on May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, uh, tender packages were made available and advertised for six weeks. And on July tenth, twenty twenty-five, the tender was closed. The tender closed with five bids submitted. All five tenders were compliant and met and acknowledged the two identity issued. Uh, the pricing of the bids ranged from four million, four hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and ten cents to four million, nine hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-five cents. This is including GST. The bid with the lowest price was Formula Alberta LTD in the amount of four million, four hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and ten cents, including GST. Formula Alberta Limited has completed work for the county in the past, with the last being in twenty twenty-three on Township Road three seventy-four. This project was completed on time and on budget. So the financial implications, um, SIP grant funding was applied for by administration to cover up to seventy-five percent of the construction cost. And on May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, confirmation was received that the project had been approved to receive STIP funding with a maximum grant of three million, six hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. The remaining twenty-five percent of the construction cost is approved under the capital budget for the twenty twenty-five capital bridge program. With STIP funding in place and the non-modified tender amount at four percent lower than a non-modified estimate provided by the county's consultants, um, expenditures are currently on track to fit in within the council approved budget. However, the construction shifted to twenty twenty-six. The remaining twenty-five percent of the funds will have to be transferred from the twenty twenty-five budget to the twenty twenty-six budget. The communication plan for this project, um, as part of the agenda, this report has been shared online. The public can watch video, stream live or through recorded videos with closed captioning capabilities. Direction on this matter will be included in the meeting minutes, which are published online and summarized in the county news. Additionally, road users will be notified by pre-construction signage that will be posted seven days prior to construction in advance of the site. A pre-construction signage will include the applicable dates for road closure. So alternatives for council are approve administration's recommendation to award the contract for Bridge File seven zero nine four, bridge structure replacement to Formula Alberta, uh, Limited for the sum of four million, four hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and ten cents, including GST, construction to commence in twenty twenty-six. Um, change the project parameters and re-tender this work or deny administration's recommendation to award this tender and cancel the project. Recommendation. Administration recommends council approve award of the contract for Bridge File seven zero nine four, Bridge Structure Replacement, Formula Alberta Limited for the sum of four million, four hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and ten cents, including GST, with construction to commence in twenty twenty-six.
Thank you for the report. Um, are there any questions for the report? Councilor DePaul.
Thanks for the report. Sorry. Um, so I guess the one question I have is, um, if it was in the twenty twenty-five budget, how come we're moving it over just because it's the timing of the STIP funding and everything else and the construction, I guess, time length? Is that kind of why?
Through the CAO to Mayor and Council. Um, yes, that's correct. With the timing of the STIP funding and then the, the later tender, along with, um, industry concern on completing a major bridge in the short timeframe that we had after we tendered it, um, it was decided to shift construction to twenty twenty-six to mitigate that risk of trying to do construction throughout winter, essentially.
Okay. And so then this company, they've committed to do it in twenty twenty-six as they, for the, all those same reasons then, right?
Through the CAO to Mayor. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kennett, any questions? Counselor Ramsey.
Yeah, just clarity on the report. Um, you know, it, it discussed that there were five bids submitted. And I did see on one of the slides it mentioned, uh, three bids. So I'm just, I don't know if that was a typo.
Through the CAO to Mayor and Council, yes, correct. That is a typo. It was five bids.
Okay. And then, uh, some, on some of these, we've seen contingency in the past. So just curious about that. Is that built into that, that pricing? Or would contingency be on top of that?
Uh, through the CAO to Mayor and Council. So there is site occupancy built into these tenders. Um, so with that built in, there are some contingencies with that. Um, and with it being four percent under our, um, estimated budget, um, we have contingency issues there as well.
Thank you.
Councilmore.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Uh, thank you for the report. Uh, how long will it take to construct?
Through the CAO to Mayor and Council. Um, we've estimated, our consultants have estimated roughly a hundred and ten days, uh, site occupancy days to construct. Um, the contractor has estimated it lower than that, um, but it's tough to say.
I ask because we've had a, an experience years ago where it took a bit longer. And so I'm glad you have that in, in place. Thank you.
Councilmaster.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Please indulge me. I may have a couple of questions. First one's follow-up to Councilmore. Um, site occupancy, a hundred and ten days. Is that road closed not crossing that river for a hundred and ten days? Do you know that number?
Through the CAO, CAO to Mayor and Council. So our contractor has site occupancy in at, I believe it's sixty-ish days. Don't quite quote, quote me on that. Um, so their intent, the contractor's intent is to have that closed in that duration. However, it may not be, it may be longer. That's why our consultants have estimated that it's potential to be over a hundred days.
Okay, so the road could be closed for that length of time. Make plans.
Potentially. There are some items that the road could, like, some of the items could be in place and the road could be open. And there could be, you know, like some topsoiling and stuff like that where the road could be open. Those are still included in site oc days. So it may not be that.
And I thought maybe at the beginning too, when they're fooling around. But sure, just we'll be prepared and the citizens will be prepared.
That's correct.
Another question, and it's, it comes from your report, Mr. Mayor. So why I'm asking it is somewhere in there, they use the word poor. And I'm just wondering if you're aware of any other Redder County bridges that have that little poor word connected to them?
Through the CAO to Mayor and Council. Um, yes, we are aware of other ones that are in poor condition. But through our inspections, uh, through the BIM, uh, inspection process, there's ratings associated with those bridges. And there's a structural condition rating that is a percentage. So we do look at that as, uh, as a piece of the puzzle on which bridges need to be replaced.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's good for questions. I'll wait for the debate. Thank you.
Councilor Holsman.
This is in my area. And I, the only question that I would have, uh, about this is with the road construction currently with Little Red, so it'll be well broadcast so that the farmers in the area, if the bridge is out, they can go around. And Little Red, they can still drive through with the load limits. Will that be advertised?
Through the CAO to Mayor and Council. Yes, we, we do, uh, advertise that on our social media and stuff like that quite a bit. Two weeks, try to be two weeks prior to, um, construction starting. Um, and that'll go out onto the social medias and all that.
Yeah, I guess I'm the only one hasn't asked a question. But yeah, mine is always concern of, of public disruption. Um, the timeframe for construction is for next year. Are you anticipating it to be, um, you know, it's a very, it's a farming community. And when people are always farming year-round. But I'm just trying to figure out what time of the year that you, that you have scheduled this construction to take place, if we're ten, if this tender goes through.
Through the CAO.
Through the CAO to mayor and council. So there, there's other items with this, as most streams have a restricted access period as well. So they do have to abide by that restricted access period. Off the top of my head, I don't exactly know what the restricted access period is for this stream. But, okay, thanks, Dave. It is after July first, so the in-stream work would have to proceed after July first.
Okay. Thank you. And, yeah, I know we've got, I know we've been working extensively. Oh, hang on, this is, that's a comment. I gotta be careful. One hundred and twelve-year timber. I've never, I didn't realize that we had any bridges of that age. Would there be many others in Red Deer County that have one hundred and twelve-year timbers?
Through the CAO to mayor and council. No, there aren't many structures that we have that are this old. It is the middle section that was transferred from another area that this bridge was built from. And then the only other bridge that we have that is this old is the Mint Law Bridge. But other than that, that is it.
Thank you. And one last question regarding load restriction. So you've placed a load restriction on this bridge because it is a poor, what is the current load restriction?
Through the CAO to mayor and council, this load, this bridge is load restricted by, I believe it's thirty percent. So it's significantly restricted. It did have a different restriction on it a few years back, and then we found some other portions of this bridge that were rotting and deteriorating quicker. So we actually dropped that below, I believe it's below fifty percent, that this bridge is actually load restricted.
Thank you for your answers. Looking for a motion, Counselor Ramsey. Who's there? Counselor Holsman, your area. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Thank you for the report. I have to say, it's a great day in my neighborhood out there. The Cottonwood got resurfaced last year, and Red Deer, Little Red is getting work done, and this long-awaited bridge is ready to roll. Thank you to some government money with the STIP funding that came in. So I would move that council approve the award of BF seven zero nine four, Bridge Structure Replacement to Formula Alberta Limited, for the sum of four million, four ninety-one, seven, seven, six, ten, including GST, with construction to commence in two thousand and twenty-six. And thank you for all the work that was done on this. I know that it had to be deferred just because we were waiting for STIP funding, and I do want to thank the government for the STIP funding that we received. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments, Counselor Muster? We'll go that way this time.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Fully supportive of this one. Comes in within budget. How many more can we prepare for? Once again, I reminisce, we sit here, we project ten years out, what bridges need to have the funding. We make sure there's some capital available in those years when the bridges come up. You get the engineering done, you're aware of these bridges, you apply for your STIP funding, and you're getting it. So being proactive over all these years is certainly paying off. If we need more bridges, I certainly recommend keeping up the progress you're on. And future councils might even have to borrow some money. These bridges aren't going to last five years. They're going to last forty-five years, and we need good bridges. Not bridges fifty percent payload. You can't drive your big wheat truck over top of that bridge. And so, good, good work. I'm fully supportive. And thank you, provincial government, for helping us with our bridges if we work together. Again, collaborations working in Red Deer County.
Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Yeah, I was surprised that we had, the trusses were a hundred and twelve years old. That's quite amazing, really. So I do support this motion. Even better that we get seventy-five percent of the provincial government. There's one taxpayer, so we're seeing that translated provincially, and it's, it's a great model, and I'm glad we were successful. And I, I wish a speedy construction season. I think the timing is good, and look forward to a better bridge out there. Thank you.
Counselor Ramsey?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Wood. I, you know, I agree with some of the comments already made. I really like this one. I think, you know, we wanted to do it this year. That's, that was our plan, but, you know, we're aware of our, our financial situation, and we knew we couldn't commit to it without the STIP funding. And so, you know, all of that was, was taken into account, and then we were able to tender it and lock in pricing for next year's construction. So, you know, I, I think that, that was handled very well, and as was mentioned, the seventy-five percent funding through STIP with our partners at the province. So, you know, looking forward to it.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yeah, I think it's great, too, that, you know, we had five different contractors that were pretty close in price here, too. And the final bid came in under what we expected. So it's nice to see that there's a competitive environment out there for bidding on projects. And, yeah, thank you to the province for stepping up and seeing the need. And it's been year over year, the STIP funding. It's a lot of, we're paying for the infrastructure, but they're helping us because they know we need to get products to market. And the only way to do that sometimes in a county like Red Deer is over bridges. And so it's great to see them stepping up and helping. Thank you.
Counselor De Paul?
I don't have much more to say. Just, I wanted to say, great job on getting the STIP funding for that. So it was great, and we don't have to pay the whole portion. So, yeah, good job, and look forward to it being done.
Yeah, I remember a time, I think it was, I might be wrong in my numbers, it could be stand corrected, but I think we're around eighty million dollars in deficit in bridges, because most of them were all built in the sixties. I can stand corrected for that number, so don't put it in the paper without checking it, Mr. Cowley. But I think the key thing is, is that what council's done over a period of time is worked extremely hard to ensure that we, that we, that we have our staff, are doing a great job identifying, identifying the priorities of these bridges. Quite shocked to find out we still had one hundred, one hundred and twelve-year-old timber in it, but you know what? It sounds like it served its purpose, and now it's, now it's, now it's not. And I do want to acknowledge the province of Alberta. Without their help, putting money towards these bridges, we would not be able, we'd be shutting them down. And I think it's extremely important that we give gratitude, you know, so that they understand this traffic isn't all Red Deer County traffic. A lot of this traffic is, is other industry coming through. We appreciate the partnerships that we have with the province of Alberta, and, you know, I appreciate that we've had good budgeting and planning for this, and I also acknowledge that we had some pretty close tenders. People are bidding, and that's making sense, and that, hey, that four percent cheaper makes it, makes it a whole lot easier. So that's what I want to say. Counselor Holsman, you'd like to close?
Yeah, I just want to say, it's, it's a good news item. Cottonwood was, was top lifted last year. Little Red's been replaced, the bridge on Little Red, and I cannot thank M.L.A. Dreschen enough every time I see him, to thank him for what he's done for the repairs in that area. And to Mayor Wood's comments, it, there is a lot of traffic out there. It's not just regular traffic. There is farm traffic, there's Glenifer, there's Carefree, there's Dixon, Dixon. So a lot of traffic patterns we've seen change, and this will just help all of that. Thank you.
You have a good discussion. All those in favor. Cleared unanimously. Thank you very much. Continuing on, should be able to get through this one. Item number five point five, broadband report. Thank you very much, folks. Appreciate your hard work. This will be you, Mr. Dietrich. Good morning?
Yes, good morning. Good, thanks. We're here today to provide a broadband update, and we're asking that council consider and receive this update and for the direct administration on it. The background comes from the June seventeenth council resolution requesting some information. Just for council's situational awareness, the last bullet I reworded, CAO Hersberg and I wanted to make sure that this report in its entirety could be posted on the website. So we didn't want to have anything that would potentially jeopardize us by naming certain names, like a company, for instance. So you'll see, I put in on the last bullet, related to the transition of broadband construction and network operation activities. So it doesn't, isn't verbatim from what the motion was, but the motion, I believe, is in camera, and I had, I was really just struggling with trying to create a public document that we could, we could receive. So with that, we get right into it. The funding details, including amounts and dates of approval. Now, upon request, I have every council resolution, but we just summarized it in a table, and we have put it to, to external auditors and the like. So it has been through the wringer, if you, for lack of a better word. But in total, projected to the end of twenty-five, we're looking to spend thirty-two point nine million. As of the end of twenty-four, we had spent thirty-one point eight, so just a little bit under that. You'll see the years. It started in two thousand and nineteen, and that was the prototype project. And just for council's awareness and for the public's awareness, the cost to do that, if we would have hired a incumbent telco, would have been seven figures plus. And so we serviced Junction forty-two for far less than half of that amount. The next slide, we'll go through the funding details, including the sources. So in terms of tax and the reserve-supported expenses, twenty-one million. We did utilize not only UBF, but two years, we did use some municipal sustainability funding to, to support the project. So that's where we get the thirty-two point nine million. The next question relates to the UBF, and we just wanted to, to put a caveat that it was a challenge to manage the UBF project. It was fourteen months from the date of conditional approval to final approval, which really resulted in construction logistical problems and delays. Next slide. It's March fifteenth of twenty-one. We submitted an application for nine point one million from the UBF. In May of two thousand and twenty-two, we can receive conditional approval, subject to due diligence. So during that period between conditional approval and final approval, we could spend up to thirty percent of the grant amount. July twenty-first, funding approval was received for eight point one million. And council should note, and I think we did report on it, that no funding was received for the north leg of the network between Red Deer and Delbrun, down the coal trail. On August twenty-six second, and we did provide a report to you, and we do have a council resolution accepting the report, accepting the terms and conditions of the grant approval. The project cost was reduced from seventeen point one to fourteen point five. They did not recognize that we had three years of inflation, and we had increased costs. We had to increase our share from three point seven to four point four, and the province and fens contributed eight point one million. The next question relates to the description of the broadband assets, including kilometers of cable installed, towers, and where the county service is being provided. So this is by the end of two thousand and twenty-five. Our constructed and acquired assets will include two hundred and thirty-nine kilometers of black hole, seventy-three kilometers of dark fiber, six communication towers. In terms of construction, we spent twenty-nine point four seven million on cables and conduit. The IRU, the indefeasable rights of use, that's sort of a telecom lease that can't be, it, it's a right to use that telecom. We've put a value on that. Five forty facilities, that's our internet pop sites, so our own supernet sites throughout the county and the like, of nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, and we spent just a shade under two million on communication towers. Council will be advised that a third-party independent valuation has been undertaken, and as of June thirtieth, the valuation arranged, but the midpoint being thirty-one point three three million dollars. The next slide just talks or shows in graphical form the constructed network. You'll note that there are, I call it little paint splotches. Those are proven serviceable areas with our new radios on the towers. There's three circles being Benalto, Red Deer North, and Bowden. And those are theoretical circles. They're, by, by mid-August, we'll have a firm date, or firms serviceable area, and we'll report back to council on that. But the best information we had at the time of writing the report was, was those circles. So you'll see, those circles also include urban areas. So for instance, the Bowden Tower can service the whole town of Bowden, and the Benalto Tower can service the town of Equus. The next slide will show the fiber-connected properties. We have over a thousand properties connected, and most council aware, we always use a rule of thumb, about a ten thousand homes. So we're at about ten percent coverage, maybe ten and a half percent. Depends how many houses get built in Liberty Landing this year, but, you know, we're looking pretty good. Current subscribers on ours of Red Deer County of five hundred and fifty-eight. Red, Village of Delbrun, four hundred and fifty-four properties connected, current subscribers of two thirty-nine. So within our county and within the network, we have fifteen hundred properties connected, and just a shade under eight hundred properties being paid subscribers. Next slide. So subscribers by county electoral division. We, we, the roubles and farms, if we really got into it, we wanted to keep it just roubles and farms. So they, they're spread around a number of communities or number of divisions. But primarily, Delbrun at two thirty-nine, and then subdivisions within Division two, three, and five, showing the bigger, bigger numbers. And at the completion of the UBF project, at the end of August, the Benalto, Bowden, and Red Deer North Towers will be lit, enabling connections and subscribers to be added to Divisions four and six. The next question relates to the financial impact and ramifications related to the transition of network operations to rural connect. And again, I used, changed the wording of the motion a little bit there. Velo Networks terminated its general services agreement with Red Deer County early in twenty-five. The network operations, maintenance, and construction agreement effective transfer date to connect was signed on April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. At the conclusion of the general services agreement, the county was able to purchase the electronics, which is really our network, two things that make it run for Velo, from Velo for less than market value. Next. In the original MCC business model, Velo was identified as the operator and provided few methodologies to justify their cost for service. At the simplest formula for Velo provided, the network operating cost was seven hundred and fifty subscribers. Velo would charge two point three million per year. Note that the first three years were reduced to allow our, our Red Deer County to increase its customer base. This was indicated during the final presentation to council on the MCC and shared when the business plan was advertised. Having Connect act as the network operator reduces that annual cost by just over one million dollars per year. The revised financial plan was shared with council earlier this year and introduced two key changes. The losses in the first several years would be higher with the absence of the Velo contract with Connect, and long-term savings of moving the operational costs in-house would far exceed the initial losses. Council, the next slide. Council should be aware that during the five years that Velo acted as operations contract manager for the county's broadband project, Velo did not charge fees for network operations, even though subscribers were available as early as two thousand and nineteen at Junction forty-two. Based on Connect's known annual cost to manage the network, it can be extrapolated that the county paid, had the county paid Velo for that service, it would have easily cost several million dollars in operating fees by twenty-five. Considerable works have occurred respecting the creation and development of Connect, which is a municipally-controlled corporation established to manage and expand broadband infrastructure in Red Deer County and partner municipalities. This was initiated in two thousand and twenty-two through partnership with Equus. The project is aimed to improve broadband delivery by shifting operational control to a regional community-owned not-profit entity. The county committed to transferring its broadband assets in exchange for shares of the corporation, which would deliver services through a fiber and wireless network model. The plan provides economic The plan provides economies of scale, open access, and collaboration with municipal and private partners. On May seventh, twenty twenty four, council resolution approved the MCC amended business case and authorized the county to enter into an agreement with Connect. The Connected presented an amended business case, which assumed that Red Deer County would have the network completed and the customers in place to make the MCC sustainable. The network completion, referred to as Phase One, was contingent on the county receiving the UBF funding. Phase Two was required to gain customers to make MCC sustainable. And further construction of ten point five million was identified, for which the county would be required to provide interim financing. The amended business case included financing to fund Phase Two construction, which would be made available by Equus, which was at that time Rural Connect's parent company. Financing would be secured by using the county's non-UBF broadband assets. Council should be aware that since April eighth, twenty twenty five, Connect is assumed all operational and constructional responsibilities, including management of the UBF projects. By the end of August, three new towers will be lit, extending service to over seven thousand potential customers, and more infrastructure is planned. Financial models forecast significant long-term revenue for the county driven by customer subscriptions and expanded service reach. We're asking that council consider two alternatives. Receive the broadband update for information and direct administration to post this report on the county website, or request that council furthest matter to the CEO or administration for further consideration. Administration is reckoning that council received the broadband update for information and directed administration to post this report on the county's website. And CAO Hirsberg would gladly welcome any questions if there are any, or. Thank you. And I would ask him too, but I figure by having him do it, then saves me turning on and off my mic.
Mr. Dietrich, that was a great report and a great way to reflect. I almost think you would be a politician, but anyways, Mr. Hirsberg will answer the questions, I guess. Councillor Moore, you can ask the first question.
So first of all, I'd like to thank administration for this report. I did send in a long list of questions in February and subsequently a notice of motion. So I'm glad I got the support of my colleagues so that we can answer some of the questions that I'm hearing out there in the county on my travels. So I have a list of questions, and that would cut me off, and you can, we'll do a second round, but I, you know, I've, because this is very dear to my heart for getting clarity. So the first thing I want to ask is, you know, we were in the newspaper saying this project was going to be twenty two million dollars. And now we are substantially spending more, and I'm asked, how did that happen? So I guess that's my first question. I think it was the advocate who did the article.
Mr. Hirsberg.
Yes, I think lots of ways to answer a question like that, I suppose. In the end, when you project a project going over five years, you don't always anticipate forty-year historic inflationary costs. And you, at the time that council approved it, they did not necessarily outline exactly to what extent they would build and in what year they would build. So the project became flexible upon council's wish to have a five-year period to build it. And over that time, every time there were changes or expectations that changed, there were initiatives along the way, such as additional fiber to the premises, which would increase some of the connections and customer use of the project is a great example of how things ebbed and flowed throughout. It was never intended to necessarily, the only way you consider it staying at twenty two million dollars, I suppose, is if you would have put it out for tender at that time, based on those costs, it probably would have come in close to that. But over the years, councils had many, many, we've had dozens of presentations to council on the project, its status, the nature of it, and all of those things are all aspects of why it made its way up to the current value that it's at.
Thank you, CAO Hirsberg. My second question is on the thirty one million, does that include the UBF funding and the ten point five asset loan that we, that we took out when we partnered with Connect?
Yes, the UBF funding is in there. The additional ten point five million is not in that amount. That amount is what we refer to as Phase Two. Portions of that are being spent. But I would say that the, in terms of what we showed for grant money, we showed the UBF funding and the MSI money in there. The project had some elements. No, I should say, it had some elements last fall that as we were building the UBF project, there was what we refer to as low-hanging fruit, which is connections that could be done much more efficiently, doing them while you were there. So I think there was several million dollars of that ten point five spent then, and then a portion of this year's project. It's in that transfer period, the company started last September, and, and the work that's being done has made its way from a Red Deer County project into now a project that's run by Connect, and that's sort of as you enter into that Phase Two portion that was referred to in the report.
Thank you. May I continue, Maillard?
Yeah, go ahead, but we do want to have opportunity for others. How many more do you have?
Oh, I have probably about seven questions. Yeah, this is an important report, like people are very interested in this.
Well, I'm going to ask a couple more, and then I'm going to be fair to the rest.
Oh, of course, be fair, yes. So I noticed in the breakdown of, you know, we're including Delbrun, which isn't part, that should be in Division one, because they, I know we provided that to Delbrun. I'm interested in Division five, how many are actually Glenifer Lake subscribers?
A majority. We have subscribers in Markerville, Spruceview, Dixon, and Glenifer Lake, with the majority being at Glenifer.
So the seasonal people, is that correct?
No, there's an, you look at Phase Seven, they're, they're, they're homes. They're fully, fully serviced homes with water and sewer.
Okay. And my final question for this round would be, how, how many customers do we need to make this sustainable so we don't face the same fate as ONET that was recently in the news?
Mr. Hirsberg.
Yes, I know that it's, it's easy to perhaps think about comparing the two as they are both MCCs. The models are quite different, and MCCs can contemplate quite different models. So it's, it's easy to put the two together. However, the nature of the break-even point for Red Deer County is a component of how many residential versus how many commercial customers you would get. So as you make your way through and make decisions about hooking up industrial areas, users like P and H, the flour mill, which considered the internet connection to be a very integral part of their decision to move to Red Deer County, their revenues can be extremely higher than a, than a household's revenue. So I would be unfair to say simply, you know, X amount of households, because it really can be dependent upon the other types of revenues that can be generated. You have leasing opportunities. One of the advantages of having an MCC is they're not limited to just one version of how they can move forward. So I think as we move forward and understand the costs more, the last three months, for example, have been very insightful in terms of, excuse me, in terms of understanding some of those operating costs, we'll be able to better forecast what, when to expect a break-even point. But as, as the report points out, it was always anticipated that there were several years here before it was going to have a break-even opportunity.
Do you have any questions, Councillor Masser?
Yeah, and the day today's going, we'll just change debate into questions and continue with the day. I'm looking at a report. I was in a closed, closed meeting discussing this issue. We presented to administration some questions that we'd like to share with our public for this transparency thing we're all talking about this week, and I think the reports are great. So is that debate or is that, oh, I'm sorry, I'll wait for debate. I didn't know it was going to be a motion, the, the report says it's to receive for information. So I didn't know when a motion was coming for receive for information. So I thought this is my chance, Mr. Mayor, but if we're going to have another round for debate, I look forward to that round.
You'll definitely get your turn of debate. I just try to, I just try to keep it even keel here, we'll all ask questions and we'll all have debate. Councillor Holsman, do you have any questions?
Yeah, the question I would have is, I get asked a lot in my area, Division Four around Bowden, when it will be coming. So I'm seeing looks like August, and then there will be notification. Could you comment on that, please?
Yep, that is, that is correct, Councillor Holsman. There's been recent communications with the folks who are within a vicinity and have the potential, at least of looking into connecting to the three towers that are currently lit, and the other three towers are anticipated by the end of the summer to have a similar progression, where they would be lit and available, and there'd be some communications that allow folks to understand that they may be within the vicinity of internet connection that they possibly haven't had the opportunity to be before. So all that to say, probably no later than this fall, your neighborhood should start to hear, your area should start to hear from Connect in regards to that.
Thank you, but further to that question, I know that we've already transferred it over to a company to market it. But that would involve like the school system in school, if they want the fast speed in town and everything else?
Yes, I think it's fair to say that you would want your company to be opportunistic and take advantage of its network now that it's in place. It's taken a long time to build it. It's important that it's built as, as a network in its entirety, that it has, it is not simply a line, it's not simply one, one single line that acts on its own. It is involved and done as a network so that you could take advantage of all of those opportunities. Everything, everything helps. Municipal partnerships with other urbans, like Delbrun situation, absolutely. You look, you look for that at all, at all times.
And then my final question, if you would indulge me, Mayor Wood. My final question is on the third-party, what we're worth, actually. Like, so a third-party report was, went out, and it has come back that we're, we're right in the ballpark for what we spent to what our asset is, is that correct?
Yes, there was a third-party valuation done. It was done in that third-party methodology to ensure that the shares that the county would be receiving for their assets into the company would be representative of the value of those assets. So it's, in my opinion, a little bit behind when we'd like to have had it done, but it is done. It is a value as of June thirtieth, and that allows the MCC to proceed forward with last year, the direction that council gave last year in terms of moving the assets over. Similar valuation was done for Delbrun's infrastructure as well.
So thank you for that last comment. It's a very current evaluation then, June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Thank you.
Councillor Palm, do you have any questions? Councillor Kenneth?
Yes, I just have one question. The old company, one of the problems they had was the radios that failed. Is, is that something that was their cost, or is it our cost, or how did that work out?
Yes, great question. The radio failure, the investment in the radios was something that was part of their five-year contract with the county. They were not charging us operational costs, and in exchange, they had the ability to produce whatever revenue they could off the network in the time it took us to build. It was a failure of their radios for sure. I think it really did set us back. I'd say there is some cost to us, though, in that had they been more successful, the connections would have been higher at this point. It was anticipated they'd be able to achieve more connections and more revenue as a result. We did not put that in their contract. It was not, it was not an obligation they had, they did not breach their contract with the county. But it definitely has the impact of having to play a little more catch-up with some of those towers, because they've been there a long time, and it's not good to start off with, with radio failure. Some of the radios work fine throughout that system, but overall, it's been switched to a far more reliable one, and we're starting to see that uptick as we speak.
Thank you. Councillor Ramsey?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Wood. It, it was kind of mentioned in the report, but I get, just looking for clarity, because I, on the, the ten and a half million for, for the second phase, because I, I've heard concern that, you know, the county's spending ten and a half more million dollars. But my understanding was that through the MCC, that this, this is not county taxpayer dollars, this is a loan within the MCC.
Mr. Hirsberg?
Yes, another great question. It's intended that the ten point five million dollars loan and the instrument take place through the company, and that the security for that Phase Two, I'll call it, is accomplished through having the assets moved to the company that then can be used as the, as the lien, as the, as the, the product that they can loan money against, so that, you're exactly right. So you're not intending to come back to the county with a further ask for, for additional. So that, that loan is to be supported by having the assets available to the company to put up as a collateral, so to speak. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Moore, you have some more questions?
Thanks, Maillard. Did you want to ask a question before? Thanks. So I'd like to go back to the assets of, I think we landed at about thirty one million. So would that be the asset, or are we, is that include, would customers have to be attached to that to make it more valuable?
Customers, that asset valuation is not contingent upon any estimate of customer connectivity. Any of these networks will become more valuable as you add more customers, though. So customer connections is certainly a very big deal, and in the, in the early stages of this network, the, the lack of customers can actually impact the value, but that value is based on where it is as it is right now, as of June thirtieth. That's the value, and it doesn't have an asterisk that relates to any assumed customer connectivity.
Thank you for that response, CAO Hirsberg. My next question is, you know, when I remember the premise of this, it was rural and remote. I'm seeing a lot of activity, connection in subdivisions. So how many of those actual rural and remote people are being served, which was the reason for this project?
I think we're getting into a topic of debate about what council's original intent was. I'm, I'm not here to debate members of council. You can say that was why you yourself thought it was important. I think when you're building a network like this and you look at it, it's in entirety, it is designed to be a network across the county. It would be a bad business model to ignore the opportunities to produce revenue from the areas that have more density as a result. So I don't recall it ever being contemplated that that was somehow added afterwards. The idea of being able to utilize the network for, for all the purposes, including higher densities, both residential and commercial, has been there all along, and I don't really believe, I don't believe I agree with you that that has changed over time.
I'll save that for the debate. And my last question is, you know, I've been watching the city with the MCC process, and I'm wondering why we didn't have public consultation more on this? Because the city went to great lengths to hear from their people. And, you know, when we look up the cost, I'm talking process now, I'm not talking about where we're at. But, you know, you weigh up the MCC with what it would have cost the county to do, with what it would have cost Velo to do. And it seems that Velo might have not charged us operationally, but we paid in another way, because now they're not there, we're saving money. So I'm a bit confused as to why we didn't consult more with the people, because we've spent a lot of taxpayers' dollars.
Again, Councillor Moore, you're, you are getting into debate, because council was given the options as how you could communicate with the public, and the options that you chose were the options that you, that we undertook. I'm not here to argue with you about whether it's sufficient or not. I would only say that it was that which council asked for at the time. And so it was advertised, you were given this information. I believe the consultants on that job were Myers-Norse Penny, Brownlee Law was the legal on it. All requirements for notification were met. Did you want to have a more robust one? You could have had a more robust one, we would not have stood in the way of that, but we only followed the direction that council gave us on that matter.
Are you complete? Thank you. Councillor Masser?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thanks. I don't know if you're going all the way around for second round, but if you're ready for a motion or a resolution with regards to this topic, I'm prepared to give you one.
I would, I would definitely allow you to make that motion, but I do want to make sure that, that everyone's questions do get answered. Does anyone else have any questions? Go ahead and make your motion, sir.
Yeah, and I think during hardy debate- Yeah, and I think during a hardy debate, we can ask more questions if something seems to slip up. But at this time, I think I'd like to move that we receive the broadband update for information. And in my mind, it's another one of these closure things. It was a long time ago in 20, what did your report say? 2019, we thought we'd engage in a five-year program and invest $20 million and start to provide rural Red Deer County with internet. Um, I heard a comment that we're concentrating on the urban centers, not rural. I live in rural. I couldn't get internet. I'm now a customer of Rural Connect and I get great internet. So I think we've met our mandate of meeting rural internet. Are we all getting it? Not. And yeah, I'm going on a little bit, Mr. Mayor, because I think this report summarized where we've been in the last, 2019 to 2025, 2026, we're looking forward to it. We've invested more money. The provincial and federal government saw what we were doing. They helped with some funding. The MCC, at the end of your report, Mr. Dietrich, looks like there's optimism to provide funding back to Red Deer County, whether we use it for general reserves or for further internet exposure. I've been in this province a long time and watched the dividend checks that the cities of Calgary and Edmonton get from their MCCs. I think it's a wonderful move. We're not big enough to provide internet to the whole province, but an MCC is. And so I think we've made wise decisions. This is a great summary. It's excellent closure to our involvement, other than through the MCC. Certainly recommend accepting this report.
Thank you. Counselor Holsman?
Thank you for the report. I, I totally can support this. I think that, uh, I appreciate that the questions came forward, but I guess one of, some of my comments would be that we started this and all through COVID, we found out that there was a need for internet connection. And as I alluded to, I get asked that question in our area all the time because we don't have it. And yes, I acknowledge that Glenifer and some of the more urbans have it, but they're actually in a rural county called Red Deer County. And yes, they live there all the time. So I, I'm totally in support of this and I'm happy to be, to say that we have become a part of an MCC that potentially, and I never thought of that, Counselor Massier, we could give dividends to later. I'm happy to be a partner with Equus. We should be pushing this so that we can get more customers onboard because, and in the end, it helps our county ratepayers out more, so totally supportive of this. And I'm, I'm thankful that we've got the answers to questions that others have had. And I like the fact that we're sitting at a pretty good money asset amount as of the end of June 30th, 2025, without the customer base is what I'm hearing. So I'm totally in support of this report and thankful to see it. Thank you.
Counselor DePalm?
So, yeah, I can support the motion. Um, yeah, I appreciate the update and to receive it for information. And I think, you know, I will be happy that it goes out on the county website so people can see some things and, um, yeah, so right now I have no problem accepting this for information.
Counselor Kenneth?
I just want clarity. I just want to confirm that part of the motion was to put it on the county website because I didn't hear that from the mover. Is that the mover's intent to put it on the website?
Yeah, I'm just trying to look at the alternatives and I'm sure it was the first alternative. I don't want to send it back. So yes, Mr. Kennedy, it's staff recommendations, Alternative A.
Perfect, thank you. And I want to say, I, I think this report cleared up some confusion, both in the cost and what went on with, uh, ratepayers and whatnot. Um, I'm glad to see that Rural Connect was actually able to take up the slack when, uh, the other company, which I shall not name, was unable to continue. I think, yeah, we lost a few years because of technology, to put it mildly. Technology didn't work the way it was supposed to, but I'm hopeful that this will improve and continue on. And yeah, the whole point of the MCC is one day maybe it'll be paying the county a dividend, which I'm glad to see Equus sees the value in this as well because I think that's a partnership that will really help this broadband out. So, yeah, I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Counselor Ramsey?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Wood. And I'm, I'm certainly not here to debate the project. This is, this is about accepting the report for information and, and I, I do like the report. You know, I, I don't feel there's a lot of new information for council in there, but I like that we can get the facts out to the public. It was great to see the valuation of the network coming relative to the value to build the network. I think that's a positive step as we enter the MCC. And, and I still believe that moving the asset into the MCC was the right decision. And I, I think, you know, our original partner leaving highlights the flexibility and the future cost savings of doing that. And now that the, the perimeter of the network and the towers will be completed this year, hopefully Rural Connect can start to focus on increasing the customer base and, and ensuring the network becomes sustainable. And I, I like that this will be on, on the website and I hope we can update it as progress is made.
Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Uh, so I'm, I'm really happy to see this report. Uh, when I, when I remember those days, you know, those dreadful days of COVID when people were isolated. I know that the genesis of this discussion was to help the rural and remote people who don't have the service. And I believe that maybe we haven't hit that mark. I think it's evident in the numbers. But I'm happy that we've got a report for the people. Uh, I would like to suggest a couple of amendments that I believe reflect the actual. I think Delburn should be removed from Division One because it is its own municipality and it, it is not reflective of Division One customers. Uh, so I don't know if the mover will take that as friendly. And also in the assets, um, it's a great number and I hope that if we ever do have to sell, we'll get something like that. I'm not sure ONET got anything like their value. However, there should be an amendment, an addition that there is a liability of 10.5 million on the asset because we've transferred it, but we asked the question when we did this and we were told that it would be on Red Deer County's books, the loan. So if the movers, if that's friendly, then I can support the, the report.
Yeah, so Mr. Mayor, this report was received from administration and this is their presentation. So I'm not accepting anything as friendly. And if someone would like to amend a report from administration, the two items that I heard about would have to be voted on separately. I'm not accepting any of it as friendly for an administration report. The question could be put towards administration. If they accept it and they'd like to change the report, I would accept that, but I'm not making that decision for administration. It's up to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, I would accept, I would accept one motion for, with two amendments. And I mean, if that, that, that would, that would be fair. It's, it's highly unusual. We would try to amend somebody else's report because it's their report, um, which really, really, really makes it hard, you know, um, to, you know, if, if we feel the report isn't correct, then we would probably ask for the questions of the administration or as to why the report says what it is. It would be highly unusual to try to change somebody else's report because it's their report. Mr. Hurstburg?
Yes, uh, to maybe avoid having to go through amendments and get in the way of lunch. Uh, I think that the report, it's not hard for the reader to understand the Delburn connections and subtract those from the total connections. It's not hard for us to add that to that table as well. So that's not really changing a whole bunch in regards to that. So I, I don't see, I don't see any issue with, with that. It certainly doesn't change the, the entire piece. The report also responds to the idea of the 10.5 million dollars that is in the report. So I'm not sure how that maybe isn't worded properly, but it is clear that the assets moved to the MCC and that 10.5, uh, million dollars of, of, let's call it Phase Two, is something that the county council last May, uh, May 2024 approved, um, that as part of, of the decision to go to the MCC. So that is in the report clearly that that 10.5 is there. So I'm not exactly sure what the amendment would look like. Are we just trying to spin it differently? Or, or I'm, I'm uncertain because that's clearly in the report, the 10.5 million dollars. So if it's missing the mark on something, I would need some assistance to understand what, what would help clarify that.
It was your, it was your motion, Counselor Moore. What, what were you looking for with your motion?
So for the Division One, that is, Delburn is not Division One of Red Deer County. It's its own municipality. So you'll do that. Perfect. I, I think with the 10.5, there's even been a bit of confusion on council when we talked about this. But I think it's important to know that yes, we've transferred assets and yes, we can borrow money against that. But I remember we asked the question of, of the, um, the lady, the financial person at Equus about who would be responsible for that loan. And she said Red Deer County. So I think it should be cited as a liability against the, the asset. That, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, so I'm still not sure.
Through the CEO, to Counselor Moore, that, that we haven't built, like a lot of those 10.5 haven't been built. So there, it's not a liability, like it hasn't been built. I'm just a little confused. Maybe it's just me.
I thought we'd used some of that money already. I think we were told we'd used a couple of. No, I'm asking a question.
I, I will, I will offer clarification so that we can make decision.
Yeah.
Mr. Hurstburg?
Yeah, I, I, I think the motion that council made and the motion that is in the report and referred to in the report uh, clearly identifies that the county's desire was to move assets to the MCC and support 10.5 million dollars of additional work. The intent is to do that through, uh, liens against the asset. I, I think that is pretty clear that, that, but that doesn't change the valuation of, of the assets of the network. If we're trying to somehow artificially lower the $31 million third-party asset, we didn't put that number together. That was done independently. That's the value of the asset. And that value of the asset has some UBF conditions we have to be careful with. So some of it might not go over right away, but that which can will go over and that will be utilized, uh, for any future year, uh, for any future council, uh, as, as the opportunity to utilize the network that's built within Red Deer County to do expansion work, to consider, uh, areas where you may want to, uh, continue to provide additional services for. So it, it's, it's in the motion there clearly. It's, it's, if we're trying to change the value of 31 point some million dollars, it wouldn't be appropriate for us to do that. That was not our number. That was an independent third-party number. And I, I realize some people feel this was originally intended to only be $22 million. It's a $31 million, $32 million project. You can change the report all you want. It doesn't change the fact that council's approvals and the budget tables that we showed are what council has approved and that's $32 million.
Okay, so just coming back to the amendment, and I know I have hands going up already for this, but, um, I, I understand that administrations said that they would modify the report to, to count Delburn as Delburn. Um, the, the other portion of it, um, now I'm, now I'm not sure if, it doesn't sound like it's friendly. Um, and I'm not sure what, I, I wouldn't actually need to have administration read out your amendment so that we can have discussions so that we're positive. What is, what is the amendment going to say? And then we will have Mr., uh, Counselor Massier say if it's friendly or not, once we hear that final one. And then if it's not friendly, we will vote on it separately as an amendment. And then we have lunch and we have a, when we have a, a public hearing at, at 1:30. So hopefully we'll get through this fairly quickly.
The motion we've got is moved by Counselor Moore that the report be amended by adding a note to the assets to indicate there is a liability of 10.5 million against the assets.
Yep. Good job.
Okay, Counselor Massier, you've heard from Mr. Hurstburg. Is that friendly or not friendly?
No, it's not friendly. I heard it already in the preamble that it's in the report and I agree it's in the report, not friendly.
Fair enough. It's not friendly. So now we will have debate on this and I will try to go around the room. Um, I will go to Counselor Holsman and you will be next.
Sorry, Mayor, Mayor Wood, just before you do, I hate to interrupt council's debate, but that motion as it reads would not be an accurate motion because that would make the assumption that $10 million has already been put against the assets and that is not the case. So I, to be clear about the motion that you're looking at, you're actually debating a motion that I wouldn't support putting in there because that's not an accurate statement. It has an up to 10 and a half million dollar amount, which was clear in the May 2024 motion. So that is there in the May 2024 motion. I guess I'm wondering what additional highlight, quote unquote, one would want to have additional to the May 2024 motion? Because to, to say 10.5 indebted against it right now is an inaccurate statement.
I agree with you there. Um, so my rationale is, is basically this. So say we spend 8 million, just, just pick that number out of thin air. But that asset has a liability of 8 million against it, so that affects its value. Because we've allowed up to 10.5. So if tomorrow we had to sell and we'd spent so much money of that 10.5, it would be a liability against the asset. That's where I'm coming from.
Okay, so, uh, Counsel, Counselor Massier, it is your motion. I, I do want to get rolling on this though, and I've had one person having a lot of chance because we need a clarity, that's fine. And it was Counselor Holsman's turn. But if it is your motion, so I will let you speak, but then we're going to go in order after this.
I've heard Counselor four times about clarity and now she's talking about rationale. So I thought I'd have a chance to talk about my rationale, but I'll wait for my turn, Mr. Mayor. I'm more than patient to wait for my turn.
I give you the floor.
Thank you. My rationale is my farm's worth a certain amount of money. If I have a mortgage against it, that's my business. The value of the farm is the value of the farm. So I disagree with your rationale, Counselor Moore, but now we're getting into debate. I wish we'd stick to the, my motion at hand, which was to accept this administrative report.
Okay, we're only, we're discussing the amendment. Go ahead, Counselor Holsman.
Well, I, I just have, have to say I have never, ever seen where you amend a report. We asked for the report. The report says exactly in there, approximately 10.5 million was identified for which the county would be required to provide interim financing. That's exactly what we're doing and we haven't spent any of that. So it's definitely in the report. We have agreed to have this out in the public. I don't see the problem and if administration will put a little asterisk on the table that has Division Div One star, Delburn, how many, if they have 200 or whatever, that's the report. I, I don't know how you can take it any other way. Like, I, I think it's up to everybody how they read a report or if they read it.
Counselor DePalm?
Um, I guess, uh, from reading the report myself, um, and, you know, the, the day we debated that and everything, my understanding of this last sentence, um, says to gain customers needed to make uh, for the construction approximately 10.5 million was identified for which the county will be required to provide interfi- so I guess maybe there's some confusion, but Red Deer County is responsible to provide that financing, right? And if the MCC cannot pay for it, Red Deer County has to, right? Okay, so I guess that's where I see this. It's that, um, and, and, yeah, so, but I also, yeah. So that is what I read, that Red Deer County is responsible for a $10.5 million interim financing that, for this point in time of Phase Two, right? Okay, so that's, that's what I see, so, um, in the report, so, yeah.
Counselor Kenneth?
Yeah, I, I can't support this amendment. It's in there. It's, uh, the 10.5 that's talked about is for further construction. So the, the value of the network is going to change too with that construction. Um, so now we're hypothetically into the futures and the money hasn't been spent yet. This is a potential. So as of today, this, this liability hasn't been taken yet is my understanding. So it's noted in the report that there is a potential here. It's also noted in the report what it's for. It's not a surprise for anyone. It should be very clear. Um, and yeah, the, if the MCC can't make the payment, yeah, the county is eventually liable for that payment. But it's, it's, it's one of those things that that's what it- But it's one of those things that that's what it is. Doesn't mean we've got a $10.5 million line on our budget this year or next year coming up. So yeah, I can't support the amendment.
Counselor Ramsey?
I'm not going to speak. It's your amendment, Counselor Moore, but I haven't spoke and I'm going to speak right now. This is very unusual to try to make a amendment to an administrative report. Administration has taken a look at some of the suggestions that you made on your motion, has made a change to one of them. The other one, I believe, is very, very hard to understand for an accounting perspective. We have a potential loan, we have a potential spent. We spend the money, then we get the asset, the liability increases. If we haven't spent the money, it's not there, it's not even on the books yet, it's potential. And so I believe administration have done a good job of outlining in the report and talking to us today about the reason for this report. So I cannot support the amendment, I believe that we've had sufficient information and sufficient discussion here today. So you can close.
I won't be long because I know I'm standing between lunch and this. And I thank you, council, for your indulgence in the debate. For me, you know, we're going to put this on the website and it's a real great step in transparency. And I do believe adding this potential liability, no matter if we spent it or not, is transparent and accountable. It shows, it demonstrates that, but I know I'm not going to get the support, but I'm happy standing alone, thank you.
Counselor, now we have all spoke, we've all spoke, that'll be your close, Counselor. We'll now have the motion, all those in favor of Counselor Moore's amendment? Opposed to Counselor Moore's amendment? Counselor Moore's amendment has been defeated six to one, Counselor Moore was the only one in favor. We're going to now go back to the original motion, which was Counselor Messier's motion. Counselor Messier, would you like to close your motion?
I sure would, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate staff playing around the Delburne number and how you worked that one out and I'll accept that. That was a staff change to the original motion. And other than that, we've had great debate on it. I look forward to reading this report in the internet, answering all those questions that people have had.
All those in favor? Opposed, Counselor Moore was opposed. You know what, this is a great time, so the motion has been carried. This is a great time to break for lunch, recognizing that we have a 1:30 public hearing. And you know what, let's come back at, can we come back at 1 o'clock and just try to do a little bit of business? I think there's more than a. Do I have anything? We don't have, that's all we have? So I want, why don't we come back at 1, say 1:15? Okay, would that be enough time for the notice of motion? Go ahead, I just want to make sure we're all in agreement, we're into our lunchtime.
Yeah, I don't know if we have a G P C, I think on my agenda, my calendar said there's a G P C following today. I was hoping for a seven and one today and sometimes during G P C, I don't know if that'll fit in or where that should go. So I'll just mention it now.
Okay, let's come back at 1 o'clock. Okay, we'll do what we can, okay? Recession at 12:22.
Perfect. I'd like to call Red Deer County Council back to order. The time is 1:20. The next item on our agenda is 8.1. Notice of motion from Councilor Moore.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. I just look into ledge services here for some direction. I believe the notice of motion is a moot point, so I'm just looking for guidance on how we deal with that. So it's still communicated. Thank you.
Ms. Rodwall?
Most certainly through the CAO to Councilor Moore. You have a few kind of avenues we can go down here. As the person who introduced the notice of motion, you could just simply withdraw it and identifying that that it's moot under Roberts Rules of Order, it would be null and void. Or if you chose to proceed with it, then the procedural advice I would have to give the chair is that the motion was null and void. And then be looking to the chair to possibly rule it as being null and void and therefore the equivalent of withdrawn.
So just a question for the record, would it still be in? Once it's null and void, is it removed from the annals of time?
Because this one was a closed, it was introduced in closed, it would never come out of closed. Because nothing was ever technically done. There was only an introduction to your colleagues. There was never an actual motion put on the floor. Therefore, there's nothing to have been recorded.
Okay, so with that, I will withdraw it because we have dealt with the matter earlier today. Thank you.
Okay, so the movers withdrawing the motion. The next item on our agenda is public hearings. We have a scheduled time for public hearings. That is 1:30. And being as we have no more further business on our agenda today other than the hearings, I will call a recess until 1:30. I'd like to call Red Deer County Council back to order. The time is 1:30. This is a time for a public hearing. For everyone that's here today and those that are online, we really want to hear from you. So this is your opportunity to provide information to council on one of or all of three different bylaws that we will be discussing today. Basically, how the process will work is administration will read out a report on each bylaw. After that bylaw, have you heard the report? That's your opportunity to come forward. I just ask you to scatter my attention. I'll try to take you in orderly fashion so that we can hear from each and every one of you that wishes to speak. We have a five-minute timeline on speaking. And basically, just so that you know, depending on the complexity of the information that we receive today, we may or may not make a decision. And so, just so that you know that, the first bylaw that we're going to deal with today is in our agendas. It's item number 7.1, bylaw number 1,002/25-E. I'm assuming Mr. Mohi, this is your, this is your report?
That's correct.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Just to hold a public hearing for bylaw number 1,002/2025-E. Bylaw to re-designate a 1.55 hectares parcel located within the Northwest, 83627 West of the Fourth from Agricultural District to Public Service District and to consider second and third readings through the said bylaw. On June 3rd of this year, council granted the first reading to the bylaw. The intent of the application is to re-designate the said subject parcel where the Antler Hill Community Hall is located from Agricultural to Public Service to reflect the current land use. The Antler Hill Community Association is also proposing to build a freestanding sign where upcoming events at the hall may be posted. Next slide. Freestanding sign is neither permitted nor discretionary use within the Ag District. Therefore, re-designating a parcel to a land use that is more appropriate and allows for a freestanding sign is being requested. County Land Use Bylaw, Section 8.1 defines freestanding sign as "an advertising sign that is supported independently of a building wall or structure but does not include a temporary sign." Okay, County Land Use Bylaw, Section 122.1, statute schedules in your package. The Public Service District is a land use that is intended to provide for uses and facilities used by the public. This district allows for community facility and freestanding sign which are both listed as permitted uses. Next slide. Subject land is located approximately one and a half kilometers east of QE2 and 1.3 kilometers west of Highway 791. It is adjacent south of Township Road 362 and east of Rangeford 275. The subject and surrounding lands within the nine corridor section are zoned agricultural district. A referral letter was sent to internal, external agencies and to adjacent landowners. And the proposed bylaw is advertised in the county news and website. No comments received at the time of writing the report. And depending on council's decisions relative to the information received today, public hearing process, staff recommendation to grant second, third readings to the said bylaw or refer decision on second reading to the bylaw pending receipt of further information as requested by council. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Are there any questions of administration on this matter? Seeing no questions, looking for a motion. Oh, not a motion. Oh, got ahead of myself. This is a hearing. Got ahead of, this is a hearing. Boy, my first big mistake today and I make, I always make mistakes and that's fine. I'm human. And so, but this is the time, though, that we want to hear from the public on this matter. And if there's anyone here in the audience or online that wishes to address council on this matter, this is your opportunity. For a second time, is there, and I see people still coming in, so I'll just wait a minute. I want to make sure none of the folks that are just walking in the door are for this bylaw. The bylaw that we're, that we're working on right now is the Antler Hill. Is there anyone in this audience that wishes to come forward? Well, you just made it in time. The process will be, I will need to know if you're coming and you want to speak. I will need to have you come forward. I need to see this light turn green so that we could hear you. If you don't want to speak, that's up to you. And, you know, we'll give you five minutes to tell us what you want to. You don't have to. Wait if you wish. Okay. That was the second notice. Online, is there anyone indicating online for a third and final time that they wish to speak? Seeing no one in the audience nor anyone in the online that wishes to speak on this matter. This would be the final opportunity for council to ask administration any questions. Councilor Massier?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Junior, report, you said an Ag sign is not permitted in Ag District. I thought it was an identification sign and I know on my farm, I thought I could have my little Phillips Farm sign. Is there, is this Antler Hill proposed sign different than an identification sign that is allowed on Ag zoning?
Mr. Mohi? Or Ms. Miller?
To see, to Mayor, to Councilor Massier. The proposed sign in itself, it's a freestanding sign, so it's going to be standalone by itself. That type of sign is neither permitted nor discretionary in the agricultural district. So the identification sign that you referred to is allowed in the Ag District.
As long as it's attached to a fence or a tree or something? I don't understand the difference between a my sign identification and a freestanding sign. Maybe this isn't the time, but...
Mr. Mohi?
Yeah, it's actually for advertising in itself. It's not the same as an identification, just to say that it is a farm.
I just, and that gives me great clarity that my farm identification sign is acceptable in an Ag zoning. Thank you.
Okay, seeing that was, anyone else have a question? There's no more questions? I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. Public hearing is closed. This is now our opportunity, council, to, to make a decision if you choose. What is your wish? Councilor DePomm?
So I would definitely grant second reading to this. To bylaw 1,002/2025-E per Alternatives 4A. So this makes complete sense to me. This is a sign for the hall to do their community events when they're having them and what's going on at the hall to promote it. So, yeah, I think it's good and changing it makes sense. So I'm 100% behind granting second reading.
So I hear a second reading being moved by Councilor DePomm. Is there any discussion? Councilor Massier?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Certainly hope to support the motion. I just have one little question. The sign in this new zoning, PS zoning, signs are now permitted use. Would the applicant still have to come to ask for a permit to make sure the sign is in a certain parameter of rules? I think we do have rules on the size of a sign. It's certainly stated in our policies and bylaws. Would they apply for a signed sign or would they just be then on the, their own is to follow the size limitations?
Mr. Mohi?
Yeah, through CAO, through our Councilor Massier, yes, they would have to apply for a development permit. And they can certainly also apply for reimbursement because they're nonprofit organizations, so that's through the authority from the CAO. so that's through the authority from the CIO, I believe.
Little benefit to that program. Okay, but they still may apply. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this? If not, we have motion for a second reading by Counselor DePomme. All those in favor, carried unanimously. I'm looking for a third reading. Counselor Kenneth?
Yeah, I'd move third reading at this time.
Discussion of third reading. Did I see your hand up, Counselor Moore? Nope. Anybody? All those in favor of third reading, carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone that came for that bylaw. Appreciate that you were here. Bylaw that we're going to deal with is item number seven point two in our agendas. That bylaw is number one thousand and three slash two-zero-two-five dash B. Mr. Barr, is that you this afternoon?
It is me this afternoon. So, good afternoon. This is to hold a public hearing for ba one zero zero three slash twenty twenty-five dash B, a bylaw that is proposing to amend sections three, nine, and thirteen of the Red Deer County Municipal Development Plan for the purpose of allowing for the potential subdivision of a second agricultural parcel out of quarter section and to consider second, third readings to proposed bylaw. On June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, council granted first reading to the bylaw. The intent of the proposed amendments to the MDP is to allow for the subdivision of a maximum of two agricultural parcels out of a quarter section. The county has received requests from various landowners since the adoption of the MDP in twenty twenty-one to review the egg subdivision policies and to consider allowing for two parcels to be subdivided under certain circumstances. The proposed part, policy amendments, would provide an agricultural land, the opportunity to subdivide an existing second agricultural residence, fragmented area, or value-added business from the remainder in situations where parcels are been subdivided from the quarter. The proposed amendments would also allow for the consideration of a bare parcel as a second parcel, subject to conditions, that being the first parcel having been developed prior to the second being considered. Proposed amendments affect sections mentioned before, sections three point zero, section nine, and section thirteen. These amendments include, not limited to, a requirement for the adoption of a local area structure plan for the entire quarter section in support of variation of a second ag parcel. A requirement for the remaining lands within a quarter to be rezoned to a non-residential agricultural land use bylaw district, allowing consideration of a second parcel as a bare parcel, as mentioned before, only if the first parcel has been developed and includes a fully serviced agricultural residence. Changing the name of the farmstead in the definitions section to agricultural residence, adding a definition for agricultural parcel to provide further clarity, and excluding the subdivision of agricultural parcels from section nine point three, nine point two point three, which is the payment-to-payment policy. So Schedule B indicates the specific sections of the MDP affected by the proposed amendments. This is included in the agenda package. The red strike-through text indicates text that would be removed. The red text that has not been struck through indicates text that would need to be added. In terms of public engagement and input that we've had up to this point in the spring of twenty twenty-five, so a few months ago, a broad public engagement process was conducted to gather input on proposed amendments to the MDP. The county used a variety of amendments, methods to encourage public participation, engagement, to gather input from the ag community, including using the Red Deer County newspaper, a news release, county's website, social media, radio ads, mail out that went to all agriculturally zoned landowners. In that case, there was approximately forty-seven hundred letters that went out, and the county also hosted three open houses. The outcome from the public engagement process was summarized in the What We Heard Report, which is included in your package under Schedule C, and was posted on the county's website on a webpage that is dedicated to discussion on second parcels. Just some details that the public should be, if they hadn't read that report, a few things to highlight is that there's about a hundred and eighty-seven people that came out to the open houses. That's the people that signed in, so it might actually be a little bit higher. Not everybody signed in. At that time, the county had received fifty emails, as well as twelve comment sheets and twenty-four phone calls, nine walk-ins that came in during that period. Of note, too, a significant, significant note is that the county had over fourteen thousand hits on social media, people checking out the situation with regard to where we were going with second parcels. Feedback, I'm not going to get into it too heavily, but kind of broke it into three broad groupings, I guess. Those who attended the open houses themselves, administration kind of noted that the majority of those folks that came in, and I'm going to say the majority, not everyone, but what we saw a lot of and who we talked to are people that were interested in their situation and kind of curious as to what they could and could not do with regard to second parcels. Those who are interested in going down that road were supportive of the initiative. Those who provided written comments, it was a little bit more balanced, weighing the positives and negatives of going forward with these policy amendments. And so it's a little bit more of a split, I would say. And we also heard both in the, in the comments that we received as well at the open houses, there are some that were just totally against subdivision of agricultural land, regardless if it was first, first parcel, but definitely in some cases, they were focused on second parcels definitely being a no-no for them. Terms of communication for this public hearing, the administration sent a referral letter to internal and external stakeholders for comments or concerns. In addition, notice of the public hearing was posted on the county's website and advertised in the county news. Copy of the proposed bylaw was also made available for viewing at the public, or at the Planning and Development Services reception desk. At the time of the writing of this report, county did not receive any comments objecting, did not receive any comments objecting to the proposed bylaw. All comments received from external and internal agencies were included in your Schedule E and can be summarized as follows. TC Energy provided some recommendations regarding various MDP policies that are really not affected by the proposed bylaw. These are kind of their standard responses that we get. These recommendations, though, have been noted and will be addressed either as a separate amending bylaw at some point in the future, or when the entire MDP document is reviewed as determined by county council. The City of Red Deer stated that they had no objections, as proposed amendments would not result in additional residential development within the IDP area. Comments from our ag services department suggested that sections three point two point one, point one A, and three point two point, one point two E should be expanded to consider not only agricultural operations directly adjacent to the proposed parcel, but the agricultural operations in the local area. I've chatted with the ag services department. We're recommending that the policies stay as they are at this point, as the impacts on the broader area will be addressed and must be addressed during the process of us considering, or the council considering, the area structure plan, which is one of the bonuses of going through an area structure plan application. Two letters were also received from landowners expressing general support for the proposed policies. One did state, though, that they believe existing acreage owners are left underrepresented by the policy changes, as they feel it benefits quarter section landowners only. As part of the agenda, this report has been shared online. Direction on this matter will be included in the meeting minutes, which are published online, summarized in the county news. In terms of recommendations, depending on council's decisions relative to the information received at the public hearing today, either grant second and third readings to the bylaw that proposes to amend the municipal development plan as per the attached Schedule A, or refer decision on second reading to the bylaw pending receipt of further information as requested by council. Thank you.
Thank you for the report, and all the work that's went into this. This has been big, and all your team. This is our opportunity for anyone in the audience or online to make comments to council. All you have to do is wave your hand, and I'll, okay, I'll take you under order. I see the lady in the, in the front. Please come forward. We just need your, your name and where you live, and I'll get you to sit down, and let's see your mic come on, please. Hello, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, your worship, and council members. I am Marilyn Martin. Our address is two six three oh five Township Road three seven four. I'm here on behalf of myself, my husband, Robert, and our family to speak about bylaw one zero zero three slash twenty twenty-five B. We support the initiative of more acreages in the county. However, this bylaw does not go far enough. It excludes smaller landowners like us from its benefits, yet we will feel its negative ripple effects. When we purchased our acreage thirty years ago, we spoke with the county about subdividing, and we were told it should be possible. We believed it to be a promising business, opportunity, and a sound investment. But as we've studied the bylaw, serious concerns have emerged around the process, the bylaw itself, and its implementation. First, the process. The consultation period lasted three months, a short window for a bylaw with county-wide implications. The bylaw is complex and difficult to understand. County could have anticipated providing more guidance to a broader range of residents. From the outset, the direction of the bylaw has been focused on the quarter section landowners. Residents with land less than the quarter section threshold are excluded, even though we have significant investments at risk. Prior to the open houses, only the agricultural landowners received a mail out, ensuring their awareness of the bylaw. Other landowners were left to learn by more indirect means. Second, the bylaw itself. The structure of the bylaw introduces significant disparity in land use rights. Our acreage has a distinct title dating back a century. Under this new bylaw, its development potential is dependent upon the adjoining quarter section owner. We are denied the right to subdivide. If the adjacent landowner acquires our property, they gain preferential access to subdivision rights. Other willing and qualified buyers are at a disadvantage because they cannot unlock the value of an additional subdivision due to the arbitrary linkage in the bylaw. This discourages open market consultation and may lead to consolidation by those already favored by the system. According to Legislative Services, acreage owners have significant challenges to even entering the market. A more equitable approach would recognize acreages as standalone entities with the option to subdivide and without the requirement that the remainder be zoned agricultural, non-residential. The development conditions should be the same as those enjoyed by quarter section owners. This would provide a source of acreage land without tapping viable agricultural land. This is consistent with the county's goal of land preservation. Third, implementation of the bylaw. If this bylaw passes, it could theoretically result in thousands of new acreages. That influx would flood the market, affecting state values from quarter sections to that of a townhouse. Quarter section owners and acreage owners should not have to negotiate. And conditions that are agreed to may no longer be relevant in a few years. Time passes, but the limitations will remain embedded. This patchwork approach creates uncertainty and inequity. In closing, we support the intent behind the bylaw, but not its execution. It places disproportionate benefits in the hands of larger landowners and leaves out other residents whose futures deserve equal protection. There may not be many situations like ours, but we stand to lose the value of an acreage which could be in excess of a quarter million dollars. We urge council to reconsider the bylight, we urge council to reconsider the bylaw in light of our concerns and reserve the ability to consider special situations. Thank you, Mayor Wood, and members of council for your time and consideration.
Thank you for coming today, and I don't know if any members of council have any questions, but I think that sometimes to get a perspective, it doesn't hurt if we want to. Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Thank you, Mrs. Martin, for your report there. I'm just curious, how, what is the acreage value like, how many acres do you have?
Eight point five.
You have eight point five acres. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other questions? Thank you very, or you have one. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So I guess my one question would be, have you brought this up to the county, like, when we first started this whole process? Was this brought forward to and put in the comments, the letter sent in about this?
We've had two submissions plus this presentation.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much for coming today.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mayor Wood.
We appreciate you taking the time to be here and give us your views. Is there anyone else in the audience? Please come forward.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Doyle Steinkie. My wife, Jody, and I live out in Division One, the best part of the county. And our address is three seven five four eight Range Road two fifty-four. We're on the northeast of thirty-two, thirty-seven, twenty-five, west of the fourth. By the way, good day, Mayor, and all the counselors. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here. I just wanted to add to a, a letter that I had sent, I believe I forwarded it to each of the counselors. I think you received it, I would hope. And first of all, I want to be clear that we're in favor of the new bylaw, but I too think it hasn't gone far enough. There's a couple of things that, that need to be considered. And the, the one that I, I want to bring up is, I believe it's point B, or the second bullet of the, the agricultural portion that is divided off really cannot have residents built on it. And I think that's short-sighted. I think there's opportunity to grow the dynamics of our county in population, in capacity of, of people that choose to live in the outer areas of our county, to bring much-needed talent. And that, that is really what this is all about. There's two sides that I see here. One is the preservation of agricultural land. There's no question about that. I fully agree with it. Being in the agricultural business all my life, in ag, in ag business, the dealership, World Farm Equipment dealership for nearly thirty years, and there's no question that I support agricultural lands. However, having said that, acquiring agricultural lands is becoming more and more difficult. As farms get larger, number one, the availability of land and the cost of land is, is getting prohibitive. But to complement that... But to complement that issue is the ability for a farm family to expand with their people, their hired, their hired individuals, uh, finding uh, locations for them to live and, and perhaps start their own operation is virtually impossible. This would add to the benefits of the agricultural producers. Certainly, there's concern about the cost of agricultural land going up. If anything, I believe it will, uh, will see land perhaps more affordable simply because there will be more available to purchase because of it being able to be segregated off of quarter sections. The uh, the other aspect is the, our, our county is, is, goes from metropolitan in the center to the far edges. Um, Division One is one of those. It's, it's a, it's a chicken and egg thing. We, we don't have enough people and we don't have enough industry. Well, industry needs people and people need industry. The only way you're gonna build on that is by developing, first of all, your small communities and the um, the rural areas around those small communities. I think we've all heard Danielle Smith say that uh, she foresees that Red Deer could be a million people one day. Well, of course it could be, but we're a long way away from that. But to, to have um, a municipal uh, community that supports a city, a growing city, you need to be able to develop your outlying areas. And this, these second parcel outs will give us that opportunity to put more people into our county. And I would argue in a sus- a sustainable manner. I'm very acutely aware of where agriculture is going with uh, autonomous equipment, with electrification, with precision drones and so forth. Small operations can be viable. It is, wh- what we've seen is the growth of, of agriculture into large operations. There will be a resurgence of smaller operations that are viable and this, quite frankly, is a stepping stone to getting there. I think my time's up. Uh, thank you for your attention. Uh, I fully support this and uh, I, I just would like to see us, I, I don't know what the ramifications are, but I'd like to see it go even further so that we can uh, have the tools for more people to live in our, in our county.
So are there any questions of the presenter?
I want to thank you very much for coming out today. Um, I'm, I'm very aware of Division One. I live there. So thank you very much for your, for your uh, presentation as well. The next, is there any other speakers? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, uh, county councillors. My name is Adrian Heron. I live east of Innisville, three, five, three, one, nine, Range Road, two, six, three. I'm a young, produce, younger producer than the average age, um, as defined by stats can. So I bring a little bit of a different perspective as someone who's involved in primary agriculture. I have concerns with the bylaw as presented in regards to agricultural fragmentation um, and the ability to continue to perform our agric- agricultural practices with increasing population within the county. I recognize that the world is changing and that people need to find places to live. But the bylaw as presented appears to be rushed. And so my concern is that there could be a better path forward. A more cultivated plan related to things like the area structure plan. There may be places and times and situations where multiple acreages on a quarter or divisions of acreages might make more sense. But there could also be situations where the agricultural fragmentation in twenty, thirty, forty, or fifty, a hundred years from now may lead us to regret what gets decided today. In my professional life, I've been privileged to travel all around the world, from Southeast Asia to Europe to the east coast of the United States and Canada. And what I have seen in those societies that have heavy densification, they've lost their ability to feed themselves. And we have a very special privilege here in Canada, particularly in Western Canada, to feed ourselves and the world. And so my request to the council would be to use the precautionary principle related to this bylaw in that there may be a better path forward that needs more time and more consideration. Within the MDP, you recognize that there are best management plans related to country residential subdivisions. But I have not seen similar recommendations, possibly from staff or other areas from places like Europe that have dealt with this before us. So my request to you would be to consider very carefully what might be the best path forward, both for the residential and the agricultural members of our communities in Red Deer County. Uh, one other note within the bylaw is that you're suggesting that these are agricultural residences. But I don't see anything within the bylaw that suggests that these residences need to be tied directly to agriculture. So technically, they are residences, not agricultural residences. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming today. Um, are there any questions of the presenter? No. Thank you again. Appreciate you taking your time to be here. Is there anyone else that wishes to address council on this matter? For a second time, is there anyone that wishes to address council? Please come forward.
Gail Langford, two, four, five, two, eight, Highway five, ninety-five. I'm in two quarters in Red Deer County. One is on Pine Lake. And the other is along Highway five, ninety-five. I, I'm very mixed on this one. Um, the non-residential for the, the remainder parcel, one is subdivided out. Um, my former life, I was a director of care. I ran eleven hospitals, nine nursing homes in central Alberta. And one of the biggest issues we had was trying to get home care out to take care of people. And um, as you heard the other day from that lady who wanted to build a home so they could age on the farm. I think that's a very real issue. And one that um, that's why I said I have mixed feelings about this is we need to be able to get services out there. If we want young families, we need to be able to get buses out there. We need to be able to support rural schools. So population does have a place. Um, the, the third residence I think should be discretionary. It doesn't need to be absolutely excluded. I agree with this lady who was speaking about, there may be areas where it makes sense. There may be areas where you go, no, this is prime agricultural land and needs to be kept that way. So um, I, I'm putting forward those thoughts that maybe that third parcel out, if you do decide to go this way, the second parcel and the remainder is make it discretionary. So if it's not um, prime agricultural land, you can look at it and say, well, this won't really impact or maybe it will. Um, those are just my thoughts. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you for coming. Are there any questions? Seeing none, appreciate you taking the time to be here. Is there anyone else in the audience or online that wishes to address council? For a second time. For a third time, is there anyone online?
Through the CAO to council, there is no one online, Mayor Wood. But I do just want to confirm that that Schedule E that was circulated to you last night and included the two additional letters um, is posted online. So anybody that was referencing the agenda prior to the update, we've now got those two letters included in Schedule E.
Thank you. So seeing no one wishing to come forward, uh, any further on this matter, I'm gonna ask council if you have any questions of administration. Counselor Massey.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, probably just a couple of questions. The first one, and my apologies for not having the new potential bylaw memorized, but was there gonna be a a size constraint? Um, I know in the past we had different acreages and there was, you know, three acres, five acres. Lately, we've been having them whatever fits the land and I'm just curious on this second parcel out, is there a, I'm assuming, and I guess that's why I'm asking the question, that there will be zoned agriculture. So my first question is, is there a sign, a size requirement, minimum and maximum?
Mr. Bart.
Oh, this is through the CAO to Counselor Massey. Uh, there is no assigned maximum parcel size. It would have to meet the minimum for sure for agricultural because it'll have to be an agricultural parcel. But as with first part, first parcels out, we do not have a size requirement for second parcel either.
Okay, I appreciate that as long as it meets the minimum. And my second question would be, who gets to do it on that quarter? And I'm alluding to the acreage. I'm assuming again that the earlier presenter had an eight point seven acre, eight point five acre acreage. It might be the first parcel off that acreage. I'm hearing they don't have the right to subdivide again the agricultural wood. I'm thinking I've sat here and subdivided quarter sections in half or, you know, a, a split that's so who gets to take advantage of this on a quarter when there's already a split in two separate titles, two separate owners? Is it always the larger? And if it is the larger, what do you do with an eighty acre even split?
Mr. Bart.
So through the CAO to Counselor Massey again, uh, we do not determine who gets to subdivide. If the parcel is zoned agricultural and it's large enough to be re-subdivided, there is a potential for that acreage to be subdivided or re-subdivided and create the second parcel. What is required is an agreement with everybody who owns land within that quarter section to allow for the processing of a local area structure plan, the very first step. And from there, it leads into the second step and on and on and on. But there's going to have to be some discussion between the landowners as to who gets the first parcel, who gets the second parcel, I should say.
Okay, and that's through the ASP, I think I heard you say.
Through the CAO again, it's, it starts at the area structure plan level. So that's where we need to have that agreement right off the bat.
Right on.
Because if you can't get the area structure plan through, you're not gonna be able to do the subdivision or the reza- or rezoning.
Thank you for the clarity. That's it for this round, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, going around the table. Uh, Counselor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Uh, thank you to the presenters. I just have a question regarding the um, the tie to agriculture and the residence. From what I understand, the resident, it, the residence is gonna be built on land that's zoned agricultural. It does not have to be linked to agriculture. I just want to confirm that I, because it was a good point and I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Mr. Bart.
So through the CAO to Counselor Moore. Um, yes, at this point, we have an existing uh, definition for farmstead, which is included in the MDP. We're merely switching out farmstead to agricultural residence. There is no tie to residence or agriculture um, as, as an agricultural residence. Um, it's just merely that it's in an agricultural area. There's nothing to say that that residence is specifically for agricultural purposes. We'd have no way of determining uh, if that's actually happening. You have a residence that's out there. That's what it is.
And it's on ag zoned land.
Thank you. Counselor Ramsey will be next.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Uh, one thing we looked at in this to make it a little bit more viable was uh, the pavement to pavement requirement. Um, in, in my review of it though, I see that still would be required for ag value added parcels. And I, I couldn't quite remember if that was something we discussed. And, and I guess if it, if there is rationale for leaving it in there, would there be flexibility on that condition in an area structure plan?
Mr. Bart.
So through the CAO to Counselor Ramsey, currently there is a requirement uh, for ag value added industries to, if they were to start up, to pave from where the existing pavement is because of the impact potentially. Some of these businesses are, can be quite uh, intense. So the reason why that's in there is just basically adhering to what we already are requiring. Um, if council wishes to review that at some point in the future and determine that that's not required and that's, that could be something uh, maybe on a, on a separate note that we could deal with. But really, right now, we were just basically recognizing what we already require.
Okay, so if, if an application came forward that was a, a ag value added business, they, they would have to meet that requirement. There would be no flexibility is what I'm hearing. Okay.
So, Kenneth.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thank you to everybody for coming and speaking and all the people that uh, were at the open houses and everything. Just sort of a follow up on uh, what Counselor Massey asked. Regardless which landowner had more size or less size, they both have to come to an agreement regardless. Even if it was, say, the larger landowner that wanted to do the second parcel, they would have to get the agreement of the smaller landowner for their area structure plan. So it's, it's not just a one-way street. Is that correct?
Through the CAO to Counselor Kennett, that is correct.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate that. And uh, yeah, that's questions I have for now. Thank you. Counselor DePalm.
So yeah, I guess that um, kind of, I guess my question's already been answered, but if anybody could subdivide, if they come in first, they're the ones who have to do all the stuff first, right? That would be, so we're not saying no, that they can't do it. It's a basically whoever comes here first and has the agreement already made is who would press on.
Throw this, through the CAO to Counselor DePalm. First, I guess it just, at the end of the day, we won't be able to accept their area structure plan application without an agreement.
Right.
Included within it. So whoever is first at the end of the day is.
Yeah, I guess whoever initiates.
Yeah, initiates it exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'll, if there's more questions, this is a very complicated matter. Um, we will, we will continue to take. Continuing around. Go ahead, have your first round.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you for the report and thanks to everybody that commented. I guess my question would be to help Ms. Langford answer her questions because this could work potentially if we allowed a second residence on one portion, correct? And then they could potentially still subdivide out another chunk. So one chunk could have two residences. One chunk could have, be subdivided out and the rest would be sterilized as just straight ag land. Is that correct? So that families could potentially all live together?
Mr. Bart.
So through the CAO to Counselor Holsman, as it stands right now, if you have an ag zoned land, you do have the ability to get second residence on it. So potentially with this, you could have residences within a quarter section. It's whether or not, and there was some discussion as well as, as whether or not there's discretion on having residents on the third parcel, the remainder at the end of the day. Uh, that is something that is counsel and admitted not uh, up to this point.
But potentially her third, her question about three would work. Because she asked for, the party that we had talked to last week, had a, like, they had, they asked for a third cluster farm. So that would still work.
Yeah, potentially.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, where'd I start? Can I start with you, Counselor Massey on this?
I think you need to.
Okay. I don't, I don't have any additional questions. I'll save mine for comments, but at this point in time, we do need to have a, a most on the floor. Counselor Moore.
May I ask a question?
Oh, yeah. Okay, if you have another question, let's go for it.
Thank you. Um, so just the, the lady, I believe Mrs. Martin, who presented about the eight point five acres, what prevents her from subdividing? Is she, I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but I, I'm a bit fascinated by the, the perspective and the, the thoughts there.
So through the CAO to Counselor Moore, as it stands right now. So through the C A O to Counselor Moore, as it stands right now, if there's that one parcel that's already taken out of the quarter section. Our policies only support one policy or one, one parcel of the quarter section. Under this, there's not preventing them from engaging with the adjacent landowner. To move forward with the local area structure plan for the entire quarter section. They will have to agree as to who's going to take that parcel, is it going to be them or is it going to be the land or remainder?
Okay, thank you, and my final question, Mr. Barr, is, did I hear you say that without extra sub, without subdivision, you could have up to four homes on a quarter? I'm just fanning.
Mr. Barr.
So through the C A O to Counselor Moore. If this was to go through and you had. Two parcels that were taken out and the third remainder, those two parcels, as it stands right now, can have two residences. So it stands right now. You've got two on the first parcel out and potentially two on the remainder, so it's not really changing density at this point.
That's my point. Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Barr.
Okay, well, I'm looking for a, a motion for second reading if council wishes to. But I didn't close, I didn't close the hearing, thank you very much. I'm one of those days. I need to cut the public hearing close, now I need the motion. Oh, I'm sorry, I was the hearing, I need a motion. Counselor DePalm.
So um, I would move a second reading. I'm just making sure I'm on the right page. I would move second reading uh, to bylaw number one zero zero three slash. Two zero two five dash B, that proposes to amend bylaw number twenty twenty slash twenty. The municipal development plan as per attached schedule A. And then.
You can make comment now if you wish.
Okay, so um, and my rationale for this is, you know, going forward, I've. I've had lots of conversations with people about this. And I do understand and. How it, it is concerning for some doing this. But also that being said, I think um, we have. A lot of rules in place, like the area structure plan, there's, it's not just going to be a free for all. And there is a, quite the process in my opinion that we have put forward. To do this, so. In a lot of ways, I would like to see it go forward and. At least give it a try and. See how it goes, I do know that some are totally against it, but in that being said, then it doesn't have to happen, so um. Yeah, I support second reading.
I guess we have motion on the floor by, for second reading by Counselor DePalm, I'll go. Counselor Kennett.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, yeah, this is one of those ones that uh, heard from a lot of people on it and I'm glad I heard from everyone. You know, both sides of it have equal points in my mind, the fact that. Um, some people are very concerned about losing farmland, that, that is, that is true. There is. A possibility of losing some farmland, but. The other side too says, we have to allow people to have options to use their land the way they see fit. If you own your land. You are ultimately responsible for how you use it. We have to allow people the option to be able to do something. And there's been so many cases we've seen over this term that I've heard where people. This option would help them to preserve more of their farmland. And I think the second part of this uh, this where making sterilizing the. The remainder as non-residential, I think that satisfies some of that where we're, we're making sure, making a conscious effort. When you do this to make sure that farmland is recognized and it's, it's going to potentially be a unique uh, thing. You know. A lot of times what I heard from people was they're concerned about the conflict that they may have with uh. With people. If they have another residence out of their quarter and that's something that can happen even without this, because as has been stated. This isn't increasing the density of what would be allowed housing wise, you can have two on a first parcel out, you can have two on the remainder. This would still remain, so this conflict is uh, is potential there. Whether we leave this alone right now or if we change this, but this is giving people options. And the third part of this to me is you don't have to do it. It's your choice. If you don't want your farmland. To be, if you want your farmland to be straight farmland. Nobody's forcing you, you, you don't have to do this, you don't even have to pull out a first. So I think this is giving the residents of Red Deer County options, uh, I think we've heard from a lot of people. And I think the options were what I heard more than anything, will this allow me to do this, will this. Allow me to use the land the way I think it should be used, so that's why I'm going to support this, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ramsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um. I would actually like to move to refer this until after the upcoming municipal election. You know, I've, we talked about the public engagement, I've, I've heard from a lot of people. And, and I'm certainly open to allowing further su- subdivision in some situations, but. And, and the public engagement on this has, has shown us where there are situations where it does make sense. But you know, in, in my opinion. We rushed this a little bit to get it done before an election and I, I give staff credit for the work they've put into this. And I, you know, I, I support many of the restrictions and, and the rules that we came up with. But, but the fact is, this is the single biggest thing we're, we're trying to tackle in this term and in my mind, it's been overshadowed by some other pieces that we've worked on. And it's going to have multi-genera- generational impact on our agricultural lands and I really think we need more time. To, to consider the unintended consequences of what we're doing here. You know, even, even a lot of the producers that supported this, that I, I didn't think they would, you know, they had. They had reasons that they could see benefit to this, but they were still fearful of some of the things that we're opening up. And. You know, I, I think a lot of people looked at this, it, it was stated in our, our, what we heard report. As, as kind of their situation and how it impacted them and, and maybe not how this could impact the county as a whole and. You know, I, I think if we have more time to look at some data from other municipalities, maybe conduct public focus groups. Get some more input and uh, and refine this a little bit better.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is you made a motion to defer to the, to, to, to leave it till after the election, am I correct of your motion? Okay, so we have a motion to defer on the floor, I'm going to continue around the room in the same order that we were, that we were going, Counselor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Wood, uh, and I will speak to Counselor Ramsey's deferral or referral, um. So, to be honest, I was really impressed by the level of public engagement that our staff took on. Over three months, they avoided seeding, they did it in various different ways. In fact, I think we had the most public engagement we have ever had. In my time on council, which is eleven plus years. The people came out, three different places, I was at all three, east, west, central, you know. We are elected. To make those hard decisions, that's why we're here and to kick this can down the road. I don't think is fair because I think we're kind of. Dodging our responsibility and particularly as there's an election coming, so I think even more so. We have to be brave and do the job that the people have voted us to do and that is to make this decision. So. We may not like or agree with everything the public said, but our job is to listen to them. So I will not support referral. I think we shape up and we do our job that the people elected us to do.
Thank you, Counselor Massey.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, speak to the deferral and then I'll speak to the motion later, depending on how the deferral goes. I also won't support it, it's um, it's always just before an election or just after an election. I've sat in his chair also long enough that we've gone out to the public and the last time we went out to the public, it was close. And I think we all realized it was close, so don't change it because it's close, we don't have it right. For the last four or five years, staff have worked on it to fine tune it to try and make it better. Is it ever going to be right? Probably not. But it's not cast in stone, the next council can tweak the M D P again. Yes, the staff love spending time tweaking the M D P and all their time spent on it. Oh well, if that's what council, the next council direction is, is that they didn't like this part of the M D P and they vote to tweak it again, so be it. But I think we've spent a lot of time talking about it, we've tweaked the problems out of it, I also attended a few of the open houses. I heard people that were dead against subdivision of agricultural land, more favorable towards it because it's conditional. And I'll speak to the motion when that comes, but to speak to the deferral, I will not support it.
Counselor Holsman.
Thank you, and speaking to the deferral, I, I have to say. I can't support it and the reason for me is that we have talked about this for a very long time. I personally think that we put a lot of stop caps into place like the area structure plan. And I know that uh, there was one fellow up there that referred to the third piece that we can't build on it, we did talk about that a lot. We thought we had sort of the best of both worlds, we, we listened to, to people that wanted it, to people that didn't want it. But at least, I guess in my mind, it's up to the landowner, they can either come in and apply for it or not. And that's, that's where it's, where I, I'm looking at it from, if you don't want to subdivide, you don't have to subdivide, so I, I can't support the deferral.
Counselor DePalm.
Thanks, so I won't uh, support referring it, um, like others have said, we have talked about this for a long time, last time we did this, it was extremely close. And um, from the attendance we got last time to the attendance that we got. This time in our open houses and even the, the emails and the phone calls and the amount of hits on social media and stuff. This was so much more engaged with people attending and paying, paying attention and wanting to have their input in it. I have residents on both sides and. In the same token, I'm put here to make these decisions and this is what we've talked about from. You know, the very beginning of this term, getting it done and honestly, I don't know how. Doing more focus groups, doing all that kind of stuff is going to change um, the outcome, there's going to be people, I got told. Don't do it in my division, keep it away from my division, I heard that numerous times. In that case, I mean, that's their opinion, but there's also other people in Red Deer County. So I will not support, support referral because the amount of engagement that we got with this has the most engagement we've ever got with anything in my time on council.
Counselor Kennett, the deferral.
Yeah, I'm, I'm afraid I can't support the deferral and I was the one. When uh, we originally started talking about this that thought that this might be good for. A referendum vote, but then staff really showed that they can engage the public and. This wasn't thrown together at the last minute, it was uh, it's been a long process and our very experienced staff uh. Worked really hard, quite frankly, on this and the engagement was huge, um, you know, when you look at those numbers, fourteen thousand. That had a look at this on the different platforms, like, that's, that's huge. All the different people that wrote in letters, uh, even Mr. and Mrs. Martin, I remember back in March when you first contacted me about this, like it. It's, it's not been a, uh, thrown together in a quick process, so I personally think. We haven't arrived at perfection, we'll never get perfection, but I think we're as close as we can get without uh. At this point anyways, so I, I will not support the deferral.
Thank you, um, I'll speak and the mover can close. We've had, we've had very, very extensive consultation on this and I think we need to respect absolutely everyone. That has went to all of these public events. The, the work that's went in by our staff. And the work that's went in by council on this matter. This is, this is important to council, this was something that was on our strategic priorities list. Something, something that we, that we wanted to do. Uh, I don't want to, I don't want to send this to the next, to the next, to the next group, that's not how I do things. I think I'm very, very confident that I have enough information today. To, to take a look at this and make it, and make some decisions, because that's what we're put here to do. I never had any members of the public come to me and say, hang, hang, push this to the next people, not once, not, so. I'm sorry, but I can't support deferral, um, Counselor Ramsey, you can close.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Yeah, this, this isn't, this isn't about not doing our job, this is about doing due diligence and making sure we get it right the first time. You know, I, I watched a neighboring municipality do this exact same thing right before the last election and they ended up having to re, redo everything and it, it took them the, the entire course of the term to get it solved. You know, this, this is part of a larger piece and, and impact on our agricultural community and in my mind. And, and what I've heard from even the people that support this, you know, I'm, I'm not saying no, but. We need to be aware of the possible unintended consequences and, and I feel we need more data and, and more feedback before we, we take this to the next step.
Thank you, so we've had a good discussion on the motion to defer by Counselor Mas, by Counselor Ramsey. All was in favor of deferral, opposed to deferral. Uh, records show that Counselor Ramsey was in favor, the rest were opposed, motion for deferral has been defeated, we're now back to the original motion. Trying to think of where in heck we were in the speaking order. I know, okay, okay, go ahead.
Just clarifying, it was my turn because I think Counselor Ramsey made his motion.
Correct, you're right.
Yeah, okay, don't want to jump.
Mayor Wood, I do believe that Counselor Ramsey introduced a motion and I'm not sure that he made his comments to the main motion.
Uh, and we're not going to vote on it yet because some of us haven't had a turn to speak to the main motion yet. And that, that's why I was trying to figure out where we were for sure, I believe it was your turn next to speak to the main motion, have you spoke to the main motion? Oh, you haven't spoken to it, fair enough, gotcha, I understand what you're saying.
Thank you, Mayor Wood and, and yeah, I, I just can't support it at this time, you know, given, given the feedback. That I heard in the public engagement sessions, you know, I, I, I see the severance situations, you know, I, I think there's. We're, we're going a step too far with some of the other pieces and that's why I really wanted to take a little bit more time with this, so. Like I say, to me, this, this is a part of a larger component that we need to consider before taking this step.
Thank you, Counselor Moore.
So speaking to the main motion, so I, I will support second reading, um, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody who took part in the public engagement, it's, it's been stated like the best in our history. Um, and all those who came out today and spoke and all the letters and you know, it's definitely, there's two schools of thought on this. I, I think through administration's hard work and the. The long, long discussions council has had over the past several years, it seems about this, is that I think we've landed in a good place because. It's discretionary, it's case by case. We can apply conditions, we can say no. And an area structure plan is required, so we are making this a process that isn't easy, quite frankly. And there needs to be communication with neighbors. The remnants of the, the prop, of the land would, would remain ag, non-res, so we're controlling. That piece of land so it doesn't become more um, more developed. And as has been stated today, we're not changing the density at all because it could happen right now without subdivision. And we're making a statement with the non-res ag portion or non-residential ag portion of that land because we're saying we believe in agriculture. We're rooted in agriculture here, and so we're going to control this. And Red Deer County is so diverse, not one size fits all. As the gentleman, Mr. Stanky from Division One, it's quite different to Division Two or Division Six. But this is a way that we can control. We are in control. It's not a free for all. So I'm confident with the conditions that we have in place and this very thorough bylaw that we can move forward with this. And you know, council can always look again and tweak. Like this is not written in stone. So for those reasons, I will be supporting second reading today.
Thank you. Councilor Massey.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm torn, like the rest of us. I mean, it's got some greatness to this potential change, and it's got some potential negative consequences. But so did the first time when we did the first parcel out and then the bare parcel out. There was a lot of good things that came from it, and there's been a few not so great things. And I thought, is this going to make it worse? And when I first was presented with this second parcel out or third parcel out, how do you define it? Really what we're doing is changing the rules for multi-lot. Right now, you can have more than one subdivision off your quarter. But then you've got an area structure plan, and we call you a multi-lot. And then a bunch of other conditions kick in, pavement to pavement, communal sewers, communal water, the impact to the community. And that's a lot for the second parcel. So we're looking at compromise. This is not a full-blown multi-lot subdivision we're trying to put into agricultural land. This is pulling that last house out and leaving some bare agricultural land so maybe a farmer can buy bare agricultural land for ag value. Well, what stops someone from buying that land and building the house and all of a sudden turning the community into a multi-lot? It's this new zoning that we're contemplating. I was torn, and I heard it in the public speakers, should it be discretionary? It sort of is. If you truly want to get that home built on that last remnant parcel, come back in, do a multi-lot. You know, if you truly need to have that additional home. Because if you're just bringing your child back, yeah, you can put the second dwelling in your yard. If you're truly just trying to make farmland affordable for your child, yeah, they're not looking for a home. So I think staff have addressed some of the concerns and they're preserving agriculture. We're meeting in the middle a little bit. It's that next generational change. You go back 100 years, we were homestead in this land. And then we needed to get mom and dad into a house, and I need the rest of the farm. That's called first parcel out. Well, now we're talking third and fourth generations. Some of them want to come home. We need more people in these communities. Division One, we have to keep these schools open. We must maintain community. That's our job. How do you do it? Get people that can live in the community, maybe commute to work, maybe work at home. This is a way to get those people into the country and preserve farmland at the same time. Yes, it needs tweaking. I'm torn on the non-residential part of it, but I have to accept that to preserve the agricultural component. So as the bylaw is written, I'm going to support it, second reading.
Thank you. Councilor Holsman.
Well, I too have sat here for almost 12 years, and we did a lot of discussions through this. It's been on our strategic plan. We had one MDP opened up, and we went from a bare first parcel to a subdivision. And everybody thought we're going to have so many subdivisions, it was going to overwhelm us. And no, we didn't. We had the people that actually wanted to come in and take a parcel out for their child to come back. Or I admit, in some cases, they did sell it. But I see this as a meet-in-the-middle type of process where we at least help the people, to Ms. Langford's point, I'm sorry, I'm going to continue with that, that they want to have seniors come in. It's not going to change the density, but you know what it will change? If they can take that other parcel out, it will help them financially to get a mortgage and build that second residence. And that's where I see it, because I totally agree that the way that this is going with farming and families that want to come home, they want to bring their children home to help them. They want to age in place, and they want to stay in the community. And if we can get new people back in, younger people that can come and live at home and be able to afford to live there, because that's the other part. And I concur with Mr. Massey. I really struggled myself with the sterilization of the other piece of ag land. So to whoever spoke up there, I think it was Mr. Stanky, about being able to build on that. We came to a compromise as council and with staff when we worked through this that the way we could still say we were preserving ag land was to say we can't build on that. That will always be farmable land. So I've met in the middle with that because I really did struggle with that myself. But I think we've come to a place where somebody wants to do all of this. It's going to cost them some skin in the game. They have to get an area structure plan. There's work to do if they really want it. And to my further point, if they don't want to subdivide it, they don't have to. So totally supportive of second reading.
Before you close, Councilor DePomm, I'll say my views. You know, I'm going to start off by saying that all people live on ag land, wherever you live. It was probably ag land, probably used some of it, even by some of the cities, probably some of the finest land in the world. But you know, when we go ahead and we add an additional subdivision, especially when it's an ag subdivision, the way that we're setting this up is that we're creating opportunity. We're creating opportunity for agriculture. You know, all farmers don't have to have 20,000 acres and farm all over. I mean, agriculture could be a market garden. Agriculture, some of these folks just might want to live in the community and just be great people. You know, we're short people. Maybe not here right beside the city. But where I live, we're short people. It's hard. It's really hard to try to find a young man, an old man, any man, any woman, anybody. I'll take anybody to try to get some help on my farm. You know, the biggest thing that we run against is that, you know, we're trying to bring people in, and then there's no housing, and housing's an issue, you know. Sometimes we create another subdivision, maybe the old house, somebody can live in it. But you know, the key thing is that I've wrestled with, and I think this council's wrestled with since I've been here, maybe long before. We're trying to wrestle with the preservation of agricultural land versus the preservation of community. And if we just have ag land left, and we have all what we have left to create large parcels of corporate farms, and no one lives in our community, then who goes to the school? Does the school close? Who volunteers at the community hall? Or the community volunteer center? Or who actually helps us put out our fire when we need a firefighter? We don't have anybody. And so what we're looking at here is that, I remember back, you look at an old map, look around my old community where I lived, there used to be somebody lives everywhere. Now we have to look for a long ways to find anyone that lives. And then you know what happened? The small little towns, it started to hurt, it started to dry up. I see community benefit. What I'm seeing is community benefit in this. And because, as already been stated by many others here, this is an option. No one's required to subdivide their land. I've often get, often sometimes people give me the argument, well, hang on, agriculture creates conflict with other subdivision. You know, honestly, I'll tell you what. I farm a lot of different places, across this county and two others. And some of this is BS. You know what? People don't get along with each other. It's not farmers that don't get along. And what we do is I sometimes think, we talk about size, size of, size. Worst thing we can do is create a too small of a parcel on an ag community because they don't have any agricultural component. They don't have a horse, or they don't have, the kids have a 4-H calf, or maybe make a few bales of hay. So I also take a look at it. These people are also consumers of our products. You know, we think about us as farmers. We raise beef, or maybe this raises honey, or I don't, I could go thousands of different ways. Maybe they have a market garden. The more people in our community, the more benefit we have. And the other thing is, is that although we're never supposed to probably talk about that, is we get taxation at this county level. And I think our community's going to be better. And of course, no one ever wants to talk about that, but I think it's important because we have to look at the viability of this community as members of council for the long time coming. So I don't know, I probably missed a whole bunch of other stuff I had down here. But yes, the opportunities for our youth to come into our community, because we hear that all the time. That's probably one of the biggest ones. And someone will say, well, hang on, maybe they're not going to live there very long. And somebody else will sell it, and somebody else comes in, and I say, it's all good. We got some more people living in our community, and maybe those people will help build the community. Because I'll tell you what, if we don't have people, we don't have jobs, we don't have workers, we don't have business, and it's a circle. So it's taken a long time to get here. This is probably one of my dreams that I've seen since I started councils, to be able to see our community build with the number of people that are going to be here. So go ahead, you can close. Councilor DePomm. Anyone to close? All who's in favor, second reading. All who's opposed to second reading. Second reading has been carried. Councilor Ramsey opposed. Looking for third reading, Councilor Holsman.
I would move third reading of the bylaw.
Okay, discussion at third reading. Any discussion? All who's in favor. All who's opposed. Councilor Ramsey's opposed. Motion has been carried. You know, it's time for a break. We're well over an hour. We did pretty good. So we'll come back at 3 o'clock. So we'll come back at three, at three o'clock. The time is, uh, three o'clock.
Brent is still out in Milwaukee.
Well Brent, you're gonna have to come. Can somebody grab him, please?
You can.
Okay. We're still in public hearings. Please, folks. We're still in public hearings. Item number seven point three. It'll be bylaw number one thousand and two slash two zero two five dash F. Good to see you again, Mr. Moehay.
Great to be back. Uh, this is to hold up a public here for bylaw number one zero zero two slash twenty twenty five dash F. It's to amend the land use bylaw, uh, by amending part two, section eight point one. Uh, definition for intensive agricultural operation or small agricultural holding. And, uh, part of adding a new district called agricultural non-residential district. It's presented attached by law and also to consider granting second and third readings to the said bylaw. On June seventeenth of this year, council granted first reading to the said bylaw. And the intent of the application is to add a district to the land use bylaw called agricultural non-residential district, um, and to modify an existing land use definition. Uh, these amendments are being proposed in conjunction with a separate application to amend the MDP to allow for the subdivision of two agricultural parcels within a core section. Uh, the proposed new agricultural district does not include any form of dwelling or any land uses that could include a residence as attached as you'll be. The proposed ag dash and our district includes a list of permitted and discretionary uses that support agriculture includes design standards and additional regulations that mirror those included in the ag district, uh, cities today. The definition for intensive agricultural operation or small agricultural holding, which includes a reference to residents or farms that potentially be included within the land use. Next slide. The ag and our district is proposed to include, uh, this intensive agricultural operation or small agricultural holdings. Therefore, the use definition must be amended by deleting the words that reference the residents or farms that, as you can see on this struck out, uh, part of that definition. Next slide. Referral was sent to internal and external stakeholders for comments or concerns. The bylaw was also advertised in the county news and website and administration did not receive any other comments at the time of writing this council report. Independent, dependent on the council's decision relative to the information received during this public hearing process, either grant second and third readings to the said bylaw or refer decision on second reading. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for your report. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address council on this matter or anyone online that wishes to do the same? For a second time, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address council on this matter? Or a third and final time? Is there anyone in the audience or online that wishes to address council on this matter? Ms. Rodwell, is there anyone online? There's no one online? Okay, that's, we will now, uh, hear if there's any questions of administration. Does anyone have any questions of administration on this matter? Councillor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Just a question on, um, so the remnant that would be, um, non-residential ag. If someone ever wanted to, uh, develop that, um, would they apply through the multi lot or would that be off the table? You know, with all the, what you have to do to develop a multi lot pavement ETC? Or is it totally like can't be used?
Mr. Barr.
Throw, so through the CAO to councillor Moore. So if they had an area structure plan in place, they would have to start at the area structure plan level, which is amending that to law four. And then as well in the MDP adhering to the policies that speak to multi lot. So whether or not we would support in that particular area or not. So there are certain areas that we direct multi lot country residential development to and some that do not.
So there is a way, but it's a, it's complicated.
Complicated, very.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Okay, continue this way then, councillor, councillor Massey.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm just trying doing some arithmetic in my head and we just passed a bylaw saying that we're going to have a non-residential ag land and now you're asking me to make a bylaw to have an agricultural non-residential. What if we defeat this bylaw? What does that do to the bylaw I just passed? Mr. Hersberg, my apologies.
Mr. Mr. Moehay has an answer for us.
Through the CAO to, uh, councillor Massey. Then even if the MDP, like the local area structure plan passes without the rezoning, this is not going to be possible. I'm sorry to say. You're going to have two agricultural district, but normally what we would do is would, no, in a normal situation, if we had this district, it would be a, um, they would have to apply for those two application at the same time. Cause the one is conditional on the other. But if you don't have the other one, it's kind of, like you still have a local area structure plan, but the conditions on those local airstr, uh, local air structure plan to create a non-residential district, if it doesn't exist, it has to be created.
Mr. Barr, you have further comment?
Yeah, just, just further to that, uh, I think Richard's got it. But essentially if you don't create it today, they would have to essentially develop that ag district. So we are being somewhat preemptive by actually having a district in place on the assumption that someone may come through and want to do this. So if there is no district that's in place as part of their next step after they get the local area structure plan, they would have to come in basically doing what we are today and go through the motion of creating that district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Holzman? Councillor? Councillor Kennett?
Just one question, uh, if we pass this, is there a possibility that some parcels that have, for example, two, uh, subdivisions out would be redesignated or it's only based on new stuff? I'm just thinking years ago, there was different rules and there's, there is parcels that have a couple out already.
Mr. Barr.
So through the mayor to councillor Kennett, we would not be forcing anybody that has that type of situation to rezone their land. I mean, they, they have the option of doing that if they wanted to, but there's nothing, we would not be going down that road. They have zoning as of right. And so if they wanted to go down that road, by all means, it probably isn't to their advantage to do so, but.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any, any questions? Okay, so if that's the end of questions, um, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. Uh, we're now going to be looking for a motion for second reading. Any volunteers? Councillor? Councillor Ramsey, go ahead.
Sure, Mayor Wood, uh, can, considering the vote on the last one, um, I, I will move second reading of this bylaw. Um, it, it was one of the components I really liked about, uh, going ahead with a second parcel out. I, I do feel this, you know, it's kind of a necessary step now, but I do feel this will help, um, preserve some of our agricultural lands, hopefully, hopefully with the zoning even make them more affordable to, to our younger agro producers trying to obtain those lands. So fully supportive of this piece.
Okay, I'll come this way. Do you have a comment, councillor Kennett?
Yeah, I, I think this is, uh, another step in, uh, the chain there that, uh, it, it helps to preserve the ag land, which is, at the end of the day, our, our big concern is making sure that we're not just eating up farmland by some of the decisions we do. And this redesignation will go to that when, uh, if people do take that second parcel out. So I'm in support of second reading. Thank you.
Councillor DePomm.
So yeah, I definitely support this. Um, I think this goes a long way in, you know, even to the first part, they have to come in with a plan and they have to think long-term planning on what they want to do. So, so making the right plan with their, their area structure plan. Because in, in reality, this will sterilize that piece of land to just strictly be farmed. So I do feel that we are preserving farmland in that aspect and it does force people to make a plan, think about the future and, you know, it's not just a willy-nilly free for all. So I am definitely a hundred percent supportive of this.
Okay, councillor Holzman.
Thank you for the report and yes, I'm totally supportive of this. This was the way we went so that we could at least try to preserve ag land and meet in the middle.
Councillor Massey. Did you, you started this? I can't remember who started it. Go ahead, councillor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Um, so I, I will support councillor Ramsey's, um, a motion for second reading. I think this really, um, demonstrates us walking the talk of our commitments to the preservation of agricultural land. I think it sends a message, um, that what is important and, and our bylaw will, uh, will demonstrate that, so totally in support.
Uh, before you, before you close councillor Ramsey, I'll just make my comments. Yeah, I think this is one of the key, uh, aspects that we took a look at is try to figure out how we're going to have a trade-off. Uh, a trade-off for, for future subdivision and a, and a trade-off to actually, to actually see a way that we could actually improve agriculture in our areas. One of the key things that has driven up the cost of farmland over a period of time is its development potential. And removing, removing these two parcels, uh, from a quarter section and, and designating the remainder as an agriculture only parcel removes that development potential, but leaves the ag potential that we've all have dear into our hearts here of, of the backbone of our, of our communities. And, and I think that it, that we've came to a really good compromise on this. And so I guess, uh, I guess I would just want to say that this hasn't come easy. This has been a long time coming. But you know what, folks? We have to pass this one to make the last one we just did work. So let's get her done. Nope, all those in favor, second reading? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Third reading, councillor Moore.
I would move third reading.
Any discussion at third reading? See, no hands? No, just, just, you're just excited. That's good. You know what? It's good, it's good. All those in favor? All right, you won the race and I need one more motion. Who hasn't made one? Councillor Holzman says she wants to make it.
Motion to adjourn at three fourteen.
I think I declared that one carried. I think I did that. Three fourteen motion. All those in favor of adjournment? And that's unanimous. Um, I, I, I know that we have, um, I know that we have some timeframes that folks.